Well, welcome to the Norfolk Town Zoning Board meeting tonight. In accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the Zoning Board of Appeals will be meeting tonight, Wednesday, June 26, 2024, 7:00 PM, in the Town Hall Meeting Room 124. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in person or at One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., or by the remote Zoom connection provided. Please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technical problems interrupt the remote connections. Thank you and welcome. Do you want to open our meeting, sir? With a motion for 7-1?
Okay. So, 60 River Road, this is a continuance?
No, they're actually withdrawing without prejudice.
Do we read in there? Do we have the notice of hearing?
We have to read it in.
No, I think we read it in last.
Oh, we did.
Yeah, so it's open. It's a continuance from last meeting.
So I make a motion, we continue with the hearing at 7:01?
If it's...
Oh.
Did we have that?
This is the first time.
I think this is the first time.
Oh.
I think this is the first time.
My mistake.
Right, we have to open the hearing and then they'll take up. So we can put it up on the screen?
Yeah. This is 60?
Yeah, 60 River Road.
Yeah. I don't see a notice of hearing on here. Look at the folder.
Layman will get it and put it up on the...
Get up there and read it. Yeah, I don't see the notice of hearing in the folder.
No, I don't think we... It was just a removal. I don't think the actual...
Okay, that's the whole folder.
Yeah, I didn't see it in there either. It might have been there at last meeting.
I'll read it with her.
She could blow it up. Yeah.
You look kind of weird, but I guess I have to closer to read it.
Just make sure you grab them.
Huh?
Want a larger?
I'm sorry. Well, let me do it correctly. Sorry. All right, so notice hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of Massachusetts General Law is an annual amendment thereto that a public hearing is scheduled to be held by the Norfolk Zoning Board of Appeals on June 26, 2024, 7:01 PM, in Room 124 of Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., 02056. Mass. District has requested a variance to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling with three stories, not the... Sorry, not the maximum of two and a half building stories or 35 feet according to Section 10 of Chapter 48 of Massachusetts general law is amended in Section 310, 5.1, basic requirements of normal zoning bylaws. The property is located at 60 River Road, Chapter 4, Lot 27, Lot A, in the RT zoning district.
Do I hear a second on that to open that?
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, we want to make a motion to...
Now, we want to make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay.
And that's on the screen.
Okay, yeah, I saw the letter. All right, so I make a motion that we accept the withdrawal without prejudice, the application for a variance at 60 River Road.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had two at 7:01. Wow.
Unusual.
Now, this one's continuous. You just opened it up.
So, again, do we have to make the motion, open it again? I mean, we don't usually make a motion. Just to continue with 7:01, we can proceed. Tell me what I should do.
I think you can just proceed. It's already open.
It's already open. Yeah, so basically, we're just saying we're going to continue now at 60 River Road. Okay. So, is it, we're going to hear from applicants?
They're online.
Adam is on the line.
Sir, good evening, everyone. This is Adam Brodsky. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm a land use and environmental lawyer here on behalf of the applicant 38 Thare Street, LLC, and I believe that David Sadowski, our project engineer, should be attending in person, and I can't see whether he's there or not.
No, he's not.
He's not.
All right, well, I was expecting to see him, and hopefully he'll be there shortly. You may recall that this is an application for a variance for the construction of a new single-family dwelling within your floodplain district. The use, which is a residential use, is allowed as a matter of right within the underlying Residence 2 zoning district, and the lot itself was laid out and has the benefit of the single lot exemption. So, it can be developed but for the fact that it's located within your floodplain district, which was enacted after the lot was originally laid out. I understand from David that the Conservation Commission has reviewed the notice of intent, has indicated that it will approve the project with an order of conditions, and we're simply waiting for the Conservation Commission to issue those orders and that the Board of Health has issued an approval of the proposed onsite septic system. When we last met on May 23, I had several takeaways. First, Ms. Sterling was concerned with parking in the floodplain during storm events, and secondly, was concerned with the potential for effluent leaking from the septic system, again, under flood conditions. You may recall that I suggested that the issue of parking can be addressed easily with a special condition, which would require the landowner or any tenant to remove the vehicle and vacate the new dwelling during a storm event. I permit projects in floodplains in a number of communities. That's a standard condition, and candidly, it's probably redundant because anyone who has a structure in the floodplain doesn't want their car damaged in the event of flood. I was anticipating that David would be here to address the second question. I believe that he has submitted a letter to the commission, excuse me, to the board, explaining that there will not be a release of effluent from this particular septic system based upon its design in flood conditions, and in fact, the Board of Health, which is expert in Title V, has approved the system. So, again, I was expecting David to be there personally to testify to that. Obviously, I'm not an engineer, but I believe that he did submit a letter in support. Second, Mr. Martin wanted to review the Beta Report, which was a peer-reviewed report of the notice of intent submitted to the Conservation Commission, and the board has a copy of that in its file. And again, David was going to be here and available to be able to address any questions you may have regarding Conservation Commission issues. Again, it's somewhat a field of what your expertise is. And then, lastly, the Chair, Mr. Axberg, simply wanted more time to consider the application. We've done our best to demonstrate that we meet our burden of proof entitling us to a variance, and again, this is the sole issue that prevents the construction of a single-family dwelling on this site, which is an allowed use within the zoning district. So, I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability. Perhaps, I just want to make sure that you did get David's letter. I'm concerned he's not here. I did speak with him earlier. He told me he was going to be here. I hope he hasn't suffered a car accident or something.
We did receive his letter. It's not signed, but we did receive it from him.
Thank you, and we can correct that. Obviously, you need a signed letter to make sure that your record is complete.
Correct. I believe we do have a couple of questions. Tim?
Thank you, Chair. To Council, thank you for our presentation last time and the follow-up. I may rant a little bit here, just so I kind of get the whole thing in front of me. It's an interesting land use case, and I think you alluded last time that you could have chosen one of two paths for a variance request. The House could have been pushed, you could have been looking for a setback, or you could have been seeking a variance from the floodplain zone requirement, and you've chosen to take this route. I'm just confirming. And really, when I read your submittal in the zoning bylaw and so forth, I don't disagree with what your submittal indicates. It just, I guess, what I'm just reiterating is that our bylaw, in my opinion, it seems to create a disconnect because before, prior years, as you pointed out, this would have been a special permit request until the zoning bylaw was changed several years ago, and now it's a variance request. Taking it one step further, with a variance request, it just seems to me, and I speak for myself, that the variance, the relief from the variance that a variance could offer doesn't quite connect to the relief you're seeking. It's not an issue of the applicant, it's an issue of our bylaw, I believe, and it just, you know, it's just a unique situation between the circumstances of your client's property and our zoning bylaw. Am I somewhat clear on that, in your opinion?
Yes, sir. The one question I can't answer for you, and I'm looking at the plan, and again, I wish David was here, and is, I don't know where the limit of the floodplain is. I believe that the entirety of the property is within the floodplain. If I recall correctly, David was saying something to the fact that if you move the house closer to the street, which would require a front yard setback variance, we could reduce the amount of disturbance. I'm not sure that that would take the house out of the floodplain, which is the fundamental problem. And to your point...
Yeah, just to clarify, the house would entirely within the floodplain?
The whole lot's entirely.
Okay.
The whole lot is. Yeah, the whole lot's in the floodplain.
Okay, so my real question on this, and you've talked about it, if you could once again make your best argument for variance, you've touched on all of them, but really, what's the strongest position you have that entitles you to relief on this? Is it shape, topography, soils? If you pick one?
Because that's really what...
So, I'm not sure I can pick one because it is so unique. You have a combination of a very unique lot shape, which actually allows you to have a building envelope in the floodplain. So, this is a peninsula that extends out into the Charles River, as David explained. We're not aware of any other similarly configured lot within the zoning district, and in fact, the lots on either side don't have the benefit of that lot shape. As a result of that lot shape, it actually creates an opportunity, creates a building, buildable area.
I was going to suggest the shape seems to help.
Yes, sir.
If you're a land area, and without that, you wouldn't have the square footage.
That's correct. And then you layer on top of that the existence of wetlands, which I know the board has recognized as a unique condition that can justify variance because I had attached to my May 20, 2024 letter, a decision where the board granted a variance for a lot that was encumbered by wetlands, for, again, a residential use.
But let's speak towards this lot. I understand...
Yes, sir.
No, I understand the previous finding on the other matter.
So, the combination of lot shape, the existence of wetlands, and to a certain extent, topography, since floodplain is derived from topography and elevation, it's really the combination of all those factors which satisfies that prong of the, at least the statutory test for the grant of a variance. Your floodplain bylaw is kind of interesting, and it's got three additional requirements. I've assumed that those are three additional requirements to what's required for the grant of a variance under the State Act, so that's why we've addressed unique circumstances relating to topography. I don't think that that's actually spelled out clearly in the bylaw, but in any event, I do believe that we do have those conditions on this lot, and David may have just arrived, but I understand that these conditions do not generally exist in the zoning district, which is what you need to establish.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dave Sadowsky. I apologize. I was coming down the highway.
You want to grab a microphone?
Yes, please.
Thanks.
For the decision.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dave Sadowsky. I'm the Principal of DJ and Associates. I apologize for being late. I got caught in construction and then a thunderstorm on 495.
You and me both.
I had a manual convertible roof.
Oh.
I had to wait till I could pull off in Hopkinton and went 26 to put the roof up. There wasn't power, and then I came to back roads and it was flooding all the way, but... And then the Amtrak came. So, you know, other than that, it was a good ride.
We're glad you made it because he said, "I hope he didn't get in an accident." So, at least you didn't. That was good.
No, I didn't. You know, I know all the stuff that was said. I could talk about the soils on the lot. We have hydrolic soil. We have wetland soil. We have land underwater, this part of our property. We have a river this part of our property because that water goes to the center of it. I don't know what that is. Of course, we've got sills, and we've got looms. We had one area that had gravel.
Give me the other mic.
Any other mic.
Just Mike is doing that. Should we just use the hand mic? Yeah, I could do the hand mic if you'd like. Courtney is very upset with this.
How, is this working?
Yes, it is.
All right. I apologize for that noise, too.
No problem.
You know, we've got seven or eight different types of soils on this property. We have a unique topography that, if I could approach the...
Absolutely.
Sure. These are all, all of these are one-foot contours, and they show how the bank, how this peninsula is formed. We've got a wetland here, we've got a wetland here, we've got a wetland, and we've got a riverfront. These blue lines are our property lines. The edge of the wetland, I've tried to color code in pink here for you, and then down here is our envelope to build on, the yellow that indicate where the straw water would go, which would be the limit of impact. Again, we show the 50-foot, we show the 100-foot wetland offset, we show 100-foot riverfront, we show a 200-foot riverfront. We talk about the distances inside this area, so we're very restricted. We can go, plus, we have a 50-foot setback for the house from the street, which is part of zoning also, and we can't assume that we get a variance or else we would move the house forward. The house is eight feet off the ground on piers. It only has to be three and a half feet above for the calculated 100-year flood that's never happened, but it's a theoretical calculation. We've gone through conservation. Conservation has not found a problem with this. They've closed the hearing, they're issuing us an order of conditions. We've also had the septic approved. The septic, we found modeling down at eight feet. Over here, this wetland's nine feet lower, over here, it's nine feet lower, so that's about where we found the water here. It travels under to this whole peninsula, so the septic is completely underground. So, if there was a surcharge or any type of water that came through, it would not interfere with the septic. The septic would be underground. I did submit some paperwork that talked about bolting down the manhole covers, securing the tank, not putting risers. Everything would be flush so that nothing would be coming in, nothing would be coming out theoretically. We could get a fiberglass tank, we could get a tank that would be watertight. All tanks are supposed to be watertight anyways, it can make sure that extra cement and mortar were put on them so nothing could escape. There could be something that could be put in. I know there was talk about, what about the cars? Well, there could be some type of, if a flood is coming, it's not going to be there like within 20 minutes or a half hour. People are going to be notified, they're going to gather all their precious belongings, put them in the car and drive away with them, you know? And then you could also have something that the cars have to be removing the site if the flood is coming, so the car won't float down the river and cause a hazardous condition. I think it's a really good plan, the way that it's raised up. It's almost like if you went golfing down in North Carolina, and you had one of those houses that was eight feet above the water line, and water could come in and out. The cars can get underneath, you don't have to put an extra garage structure here, they can be protected from the elements. Again, the minimal disturbance, the land will be exactly the same as it was before. We won't be taking away any of the floodplain or causing any flooding for anyone downstream or blocking anything.
I have a question. How do you prevent the septic tank from buoyancy effect when you get a flood on this design?
Well, first of all, the tank's not up out of the ground, so right now, the buoyancy would be...
You have the water eight feet. It's going to come up to two feet in the ground.
If the tank's empty. If the tank's full, it won't have an issue.
It won't, but it...
I talk about...
Hopefully, it's not full.
The tank is, through the chair, the tank is 13,200 gallons. You can get a H20 HD, it's a six-inch wall instead of a four-inch wall, and it may get heavier. If that flood comes, it's going to be on the surface. It's not going to get underneath, it's going to take a while. If the flood comes, it'll only last two or three days. For water to get down underneath that tank and make it buoyant, it's going to take two to three weeks to percolate and get in through there, but when it's racing across, like supposedly a flood would be if it ever, if it ever did occur, it wouldn't have time to get underneath and push up. But by using the extra heavy tank, the tank's not going to float, and there's buoyancy calculations on the plan that was approved by the Board of Health.
Thank you. I have a question for, if I could direct it towards Town Council, just to help me out. You know, I guess I just struggle with the nexus, and not with the presentation at all. I struggle with our zoning bylaw, and we're stuck with it. But to me, it doesn't seem to be a nexus between the variance that's in the relief from the floodplain. I guess my question is, if we found that, okay, they've met the requirements for a variance, even though in my opinion, there's no nexus to the relief from the floodplain, you could feel comfortable granting a variance, regardless that there's no nexus. They're not asked to do that. We're stuck with the bylaw, I get that. So, I just, I just struggle with that conceptually. I don't know if there's an answer for that, or if it's vague, and I struggle with it in my mind, maybe it's just the way that I think about it.
Yeah, so, you know, there's the regular variance standards of 48, Section 10, which we've been discussing, shape, topography, soil conditions.
Right.
I'm going to tread carefully because I don't want to step on anyone's toes.
That's fine.
Because it's, I'm not a board member, so my opinion was to take it for what it's worth, I suppose. So, you're right about the nexus. But the floodplain bylaw does include a variance section that includes three additional things to consider. So, I think there may be a nexus problem, and that may be caused by the bylaw. You know, the bylaw has a variance section, so I think I'd be hard-pressed to give the opinion that no variance could ever be issued in the floodplain zone because the bylaw has a variance section that contemplates it. You know, how you marry the variance standards in the floodplain zone with the 48, Section 10 standards is a difficult question to answer. I think that's what your role is tonight, tonight, to discuss that.
You've helped me out. I go back to the applicant now, just the next step, and you've already addressed this, I believe, the other three criterias. I think, I think they were addressed in three replication here, and previously, I happened to be in some of those conservation meetings for unrelated matter, and I think they, I think they were the similar concerns there, and addressed by you and addressed by Beta. I don't know if you want to make another comment on that or not, but...
Through the chair, if I can be recognized. The one thing I want to say about the variance that was talked about, it doesn't specifically say that variance has to apply to setback. It says a variance can apply to anything that's in that bylaw. So, if it's open like that because you didn't tie it down saying it's only going to be for setback from the street, or from side yard, or from rear yard, or a built, you know, a shed too close, or whatever, since it says a variance can be granted, then a variance can be granted. It never specifically said use it to the lot shape, the lot area, the setback from the lot line. None of those things were called out. So, it's an open-ended, if we meet the criteria for variance, then you could approve a variance if you think we met that criteria. There were three other things, and we did talk and address and even write those down and submit those to the board.
Sir, Chair Axberg, I think that was your question. This is, this is Adam Brodsky.
Can I actually ask a question as a board member, Adam?
Hold on one second, Courtney. He had, he had the floor.
I've had my hand up for several minutes. It's been hard to get anybody's attention. I have, I just have a question for Town Council on the point they just made.
Hold on one second. Let's let Adam talk, and then we'll get back to you, Courtney.
Thank you. I struggled with your bylaw because I gave you the entire history of the regulation of the floodplain, as I was able to get that information from the town, and it made perfect sense to me that you would require a special permit for this use within the floodplain, which is fairly consistent with how other communities deal with it. I recognize that the bylaw was changed in 2021 to convert that to a variance, but I think the point you're making is that if there has to be a nexus to floodplain, so because you're in the floodplain, you, that, I'm having a hard time articulating the logic, the logic problem here, which is what I think you're struggling with, which is that, you know, if the nexus has to be, well, you're in the floodplain and you can't get a variance because you're in a floodplain, we're locked into circular reasoning, which is why I'm guessing Town Meeting had those three criteria. I candidly could not tell whether it was the intention of Town Meeting to specifically invoke the requirements of 48, Section 10. All it says is, as set out by state law, must meet the requirements set out by state law. I don't know if those are zoning requirements, I don't know if those were conservation requirements for land subject to playing. I don't know what that is, and I'm not in any position to guess, but it wouldn't make any logical sense to have a variance requirement or a variance option in the floodplain if you couldn't get a variance because you're in the floodplain, which I think was Town Council's, Town Council's opinion. So, that's all I can say on that issue.
Courtney?
Okay. Well, I don't think that the intent was specifically just so that single-family homes could receive a variance in the floodplain. The thing that I can't get around is that 40A requires that your variance not derogate from the intent of the bylaw, and the... And the first condition of the bylaw is that we're not going to build residential structures in the floodplain. Personally, I think that the variance process that exists in there contemplates the fact that some people already exist in the floodplain, will want to modify their structures, may want to build a garage or something of that nature, and there might be a time and a place where we might consider it. I don't think that there's a nexus issue with why we regulate floodplain development and why we preclude floodplain development just as a logic exercise, as a planning exercise. That's pretty common sense why you do that, that there's a reason why it's kind of a non-starter. Otherwise, it wouldn't be the floodplain. That's basically all I have to say about that. I still don't believe that the variance issue is necessarily satisfied around the issue of derogating from the intent. And I really don't think that a variance is actually something that is an entitlement. I think it is a request and it is a request that we may grant if we find certain circumstances exist. But even in that case, we are not obligated. That's all I've got to say on this one.
Did you have something for Town Councils, Courtney? You had said something.
Oh, with respect to Town Council, my question to them or my question with them was what their read of the first sentence in the floodplain bylaw is. Because I think, to me, I think the idea was contemplated when the bylaw was updated in 2021 that we didn't actually want new residential structures in the floodplain. I don't think that there's necessarily a logical leap. I think they kind of addressed that issue and then there's a variance process at the end. I don't know that I wasn't there, wasn't part of that process, but my guess would be that was more about modifying existing situations. And potentially, you know, during the first meeting, there is a lot of discussion about how this is a beautiful, lovely recreational asset which one family will get to enjoy, though recreation uses are not precluded necessarily in the floodplain. And so should somebody need a small structure to serve that use, that might also be slightly more reasonable than a new single-family home.
Did you-
Chair Ashberg, if I might, it's Adam Brodsky. I just want to clarify. I mean, we have no issue with the town regulating the floodplain. It makes perfect sense to do so.
Are we doing a back and forth or are we going to-
I'm sorry. I'm happy to wait until you direct me to Chair Ashberg, but I think it's rude to have other people interrupt me while I'm speaking. So I'll defer to you as to when I can speak. And I just wanted to briefly make a point because I think Ms. Starling was inaccurate in some of her recitation of the bylaw.
Okay, hold on one second. I have a question and this is directed to you, David. Do you, I know floodplains are changed periodically. Their delineation as to where they are. And I know the one that was down by the airport has changed. I don't know when it changed or what, but has this lot always been in the floodplain? Do you know? Or did it just, when they changed the, when they did the red delineation of floodplains?
When was that map done?
Do you have any?
I don't have the exact date in front of me. But at one point, this lot was not in the floodplain. It's way they've recalculated, bridges have come in, other construction, other hindrances have come in during the floodplain and the amount of rain has been increased.
Right. And who calculates the floodplains is a question I have. FEMA, right?
Yeah, that was, the last update was done. It started in 15 and then there was a full review process. There were two years of public input. There was public notification for lots that were now included into the floodplain that weren't previously included. It was a pretty long ordeal. In fact, it packed in insurance companies and stuff like that. So the final maps were accepted, I think, around 2020.
Okay.
Sir, Chair, Chair Ashberg, at the appropriate time, the date of the actual floodplain map for this project is on the site plan. It's 2012.
2012, okay.
So you had no changes.
They've had no changes since then.
No changes in the-
Yeah, prior.
We haven't got the official word from FEMA to update the maps yet.
Okay.
That's delayed the release of that.
Okay. Adam, you had something else you wanted to say, is that correct?
Oh, I think Ms. Starling said something to the effect that she was talking about the intention to the bylaw, which I can't speak to because obviously I was not at Town Meeting and we don't have a legislative record, so to speak. But the prohibition for construction of the floodplain related to no new buildings or structures. So the bylaw change had nothing whatsoever to do with the repair of existing structures. Wasn't addressed in this. But the special permit provision was changed to a variance, which then prohibited new construction absent the grant of a variance.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Mike, did you have any questions? Or anything to say? I value your opinion.
And I wasn't here for the other, so I'm sorry. I might have some redundancy. The house is 50 feet back now?
Yes.
Right? You're saying?
Now it's 50 feet back.
50 feet back. And what's the height of the house? With the eight-foot garage under it, what's the height of the house?
The height of the house is 29 feet.
With the eight-foot garage under it?
Yeah, with the eight piers. And then the house starts from there. A normal house starts at 10 or 11 feet. This one would be starting at eight because of the piers. So that saves three feet in that height.
So it's a single-floor house?
Normally, it's a single-family. It's a two-story. Normally, they're 32. This one will be 29 because there's only an eight-foot pier, not an 11-foot buildup with your cross beams.
Any other questions?
So if not, just to clarify, if not for the floodplain district, there'd be no, because you have the 50-foot setback, the lot's grandfathered, there'd be no requirement for a variance. Just like, just clear on that. It's all the floodplain.
Through the chair, that's correct.
There's no setback issues here.
No other issues. And the lot was created prior to the floodplain district being created?
The lot was created prior to zoning.
Prior to zoning.
The floodplain's been around forever. But it changes, it does change.
What?
1945, the lot was created.
Yep.
It was.
It's been in Land Court since then. Has one piece, nothing taken from it and nothing added to it.
Do we have any participants in the gallery that have any questions towards this?
Let me go out to 68 River Road.
For 68 River Road. I see no hands. Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Council, do you have anything you need to add or anything? You go. Okay.
Am I positioned to close the hearing?
I think so.
All right. I'll make a motion that we close the hearing for 68 River Road.
Chair Ashberg, before you move to close the public hearing, I did ask this previously. I know it's not the tradition of the board to conduct a straw poll. I think we've made a solid case for the grant of a variance. But if not, I would hate to get a denial and then have the landowners subject to a two-year moratorium to reapply. Is there any chance we can get a sense of the board required you close of the public hearing? Because if we don't have the support for this, we may either request a continuance or consider to withdraw the application. I'm just trying to protect the landowners.
What do you think, Tom? No. Adam, at this time, I don't think we're going to. I think we're going to just close the hearing. We've heard everything. I appreciate that, though. Thank you for asking. Unless you want to withdraw, but-
So I'm just going to have to defer to Mr. Sadowski on that.
We'd like the board to close the hearing.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we close the hearing for 68 River Road, requesting a variance to construct a home in the floodplain protection district.
I'll second that.
All in favor to close?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. We will deliberate and let you know.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome, thank you.
I know you're all volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, good night.
Thank you.
We'll just continue 30 Birch. Okay. It's after 7:05, obviously.
All right, we're moving on to the 7:05 hearing of 30 Birch Road. Want to open? We don't even have to open.
No, I think we just needed, I know we had some homework to do.
We did. We were supposed to all drive by.
Right, so I think most of the board did do that. So-
So is the applicant here?
Yes, I'm here. I'm the homeowner. Sorry I couldn't make it out there. I'm here with my four-year-olds and my wife got stuck out there in the weather as well.
You're allowed to meet by Zoom, so you're here. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, no problem, Dave.
Go ahead, Colin.
Stay out of the rain.
Better take that one.
Never leave your roof up in there.
That's right.
I don't.
All right, go ahead. You have the floor, sir.
Now he loses audio.
He lost his audio. No, I'm here. Yeah, I'm ready for questions or follow-ups.
So I drove by it. It looks-
There it is.
Is that the picture? It's the one on the left, that one?
That's it. That's it.
And that must be a picture from the very edge of street.
Yes.
I think that's even across the street.
I think so.
Because I think there's a road in between. That's showing a lot of distance and there's not a lot of distance to that.
The roads in between.
Actually, that grassy area, that's part of the property. We haven't done the landscaping in the front because of the, you know, we're awaiting your decision for this and then we'll obviously move forward and decide what to do with the landscaping. But that is part of the property.
So in reality, that picture was taken from the street?
Yes.
Okay.
That sign where you see a pearly painting on the bottom, that's on our property.
Do you have a plot plan? Can you throw that up?
Can someone put the plot plan?
Yep, she's got to do it. Anybody from the audience have a question too? While we're kind of waiting for the plot plan to go up? I drove by it. If you put 24 feet of garage in front of it, it-
Looks like a Boston Bronx story.
Yeah, I mean, it-
That's a picture.
Yeah, that is a totally better picture.
Where'd you get that? It's in the folder, Elaine, is a better picture.
Yeah, the folder's got a better picture.
I think it's picture one.
I think that's a photography trick right there.
Yeah, I don't think that's really-
Well, he's also looking at it from the neighbor's property.
There's our plan, that's good.
But the site plan first, then?
Yep, let's do the site plan first. So what's the, what's the, what's the setback right now? Can you read it there?
Yeah, 29.3.
I believe it's just over 60 feet. I'm not sure if John, John, are you on the call too? John Spink, he's on the call. He'd be able to answer that more clearly.
It's 61.3 feet.
So the, so the, right now, the setback from the street is 61 feet?
Yep.
Okay.
And the proposal will be 29.3. And required is 50.
Yep. And there is an elevation change from the road to the house there.
Is that correct, that the proposal's to go to 29 feet?
The proposal is, that's why we're here.
Yes, yeah, it would be to bring it within 29 feet.
It's a variance, not a sentence.
Well, it's special permit because we changed the bylaw.
Oh, that's right.
Anybody have any questions? So the top, so it's going to be a flat roof with a deck on it? Is that what I understand? Okay.
Yes.
The plan?
And on the plot plan there?
The plan?
Yeah, there's a plan.
Yeah, there's a-
Isn't that right there on the left?
No, elevation. Elevation.
Yeah, we'll open it up.
Okay, hold on. Sorry. 68, 30, I only have that.
Obviously, 18 and 22 are much closer.
They are. They are, yes.
Maybe the actual special permit document, I don't know what's going to be in here. I'm going to scroll on this stuff sometimes.
If I may really quickly, I think one point I think we made on the last meeting is that it still would adhere to the make and shape of the neighborhood. There's another property nearby that also has similar features that has a garage in front of the house that I think it violates the setbacks more significantly than 30 Birch Road would.
That's about what, four doors down?
Yeah, it was at least four doors.
Yeah, about. Yeah, exactly. And then I think spacing in general and then they put-
They didn't have a deck on it, no. It was just a roof.
And was, I don't know if that one was detached.
That I don't think it was.
It was attached.
It was attached.
I think it was attached, current part of the house.
This one's detached.
Yeah, I think you're correct. I think you're correct. But a general point about the neighborhood, I think it's, a lot of the lots are kind of-
This is detached.
There's not a lot of spacing on the lots. It's kind of like, you know, a lake neighborhood with kind of smaller homes. And, you know, I think we've done our best we could with kind of the main building and then this would be kind of in addition to that.
So the elevation I'm seeing that you submitted, it has a peaked roof. It doesn't have a flat roof.
To the applicant, at the last hearing, there were a few residents that expressed a lot of concern. This being a detached garage, not that issue, but the roof deck possibly on that garage. Roof deck indicates people, probably noise, that type of a thing. I just don't know if you have any comments on that? It was a big concern from some of the neighbors there. There was one house down the street, I think, there is a roof, I'll call it a deck. It might be attached to the house.
It is.
It's an older structure. There seems to be a newer structure and it seems like you have space there. But I just want to know if you want to comment on what some of those residents were concerned about?
I have no particular comments to address on that. Obviously, I appreciate their concern. If their concern's specific to the use case of it, I mean, all I can say is that, you know, we've never had like a noise violation or anything while living there and pertaining to the use case, you know, yeah, I don't really have anything to address that. I appreciate their concerns and it is what it is.
What's the hatchet?
It's a special permit request, not a theory.
It's a special permit, yeah.
You already have a balcony on the front of the house, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so you already have a deck outside and is it generating noise complaints currently?
There's nobody living in the house, Courtney.
Oh, there's nobody there currently?
Yeah.
And I can't recall, does the applicant plan to live in this house?
The applicant did not state that.
Okay.
They do not know what they're doing.
I lived there from 2016 until 2020.
But you don't, you told us at the last meeting you don't know what your intention is to whether move back to it or keep it or sell it?
We can't treat him any differently, whether he's gonna live there or if he's gonna run it.
No, agreed.
We don't even want to...
Agreed. We're just, we have some hands raised in the audience here.
Yes, for the balcony.
Hold on one second. We need to get a microphone, and you need to state your name and address, please, sir, before you start.
My name is Rodney Ramos. I'm the one working with Mr. Hornigal on the hallway, and if they have any issue for the balcony, and we can just remove the balcony. We don't have to build the balcony at all.
You're talking about the deck?
The deck.
Yeah, well, I wanted to clarify.
I don't know if that microphone is on. I didn't hear any of that.
We're working on that.
Oh, okay. Oh, good. Other people know.
And before we work on the garage, we already contacted with the fire department, and they give us the distance we can build between the house, the porch...
Yep.
And the house. We already made arrangements with the fire department.
This gentleman, I didn't get the address for this gentleman.
He's just working with him.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, got it.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
My name is Ken Phillips. I live next door.
Okay.
This place is a monstrosity.
I've been by it. Thank you. Do you have any other concerns other than that it's a monstrosity?
Yeah, my name is Suzanne Phillips. I live right next door.
Yep.
And I think the comparison that he had to the house down the street with the garage, I don't think that was very fair at all. That is a one-car garage, and it's partially under the house. All of the owner's job was extended out a little so he could work on his vehicles. So I don't think there's a comparison there. It's only one car, and it's nothing like what he wanted to do. And I think Oliver seems to want to do is devalue all the property in the neighborhood. I don't think it's very fair what he has done. I think it's very out of place in that neighborhood.
Suzanne, I have a question for you. How, do you have an idea of how close your house is to the street? Because when I was out there, it looked like yours was closer than theirs. Is that correct?
About five feet. Five feet from my house. Been there since 1931, so...
Okay. So your house is closer to the road? Okay.
If you look at them, they're pretty close.
Yep, I see that.
It almost looks, in that picture, it almost looks like the roof lines are equal.
Yep.
But they're not. If you're coming down the street, his house is a whole story higher than any other house in the neighborhood.
Correct, correct. I've been there. You have anything else you want to add? We have some other hands. Ryan McKay on Zoom.
If they want to put a garage out in front of that house, it's gonna look like hell. Be right up against the road just about.
Okay.
Yeah, we have the letter from...
We do have a letter from you. Ryan McKay, I see your hand up.
You got the letter, that's good enough.
I do.
Yeah, basically, I'll keep it very short then. Yeah.
Just state your address, Ryan.
14 Ash Road.
So you're behind it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Basically, you know, I got the letter in the mail back when this was all happening. I kind of didn't really think twice about it because, again, as I kind of said in the letter, like, there's lots of trees in between. I don't really have occasion to go down there. Kind of live and let live kind of person, don't really care. However, after watching the last meeting, you know, learning about how this is all, you know, built in 2020, I mean, I knew that obviously because I've been living here, but that it was, you know, built four years ago, and that none of this was considered then at that time, like, you know, put in the garage, having that, you know, approved at the time, which, fine, you know, sure, go ahead and ask for the exception. But then after listening to the neighbors have an issue, you know, my own next-door neighbor, as well as obviously his next-door neighbor, that's where I kind of, you know, to me, the onus is on the person building the house to account for all this stuff. And, you know, it's asked for the exception at that time, not after they build the house, then after their neighbors have an issue with it, to then be trying to get exception. It's unfortunate, but, you know, I feel like his own due diligence was kind of missed, and, you know, the burden of that shouldn't fall on the neighbors that do feel strongly about it.
Thank you, Ryan. I appreciate that. I see another hand. Oliver, you're back.
Hey, guys. I'm just gonna quickly respond to that. I mean, things have changed. It's been a long process. You know, we've done our best to adhere to, you know, the policies of the town. I'm not sure if there is a part of, you know, the bylaw that requires us to, you know, survey all the homeowners in the area to find out what people's opinion of how the architecture might look like in the end. But I do want to say that, you know, our goal is obviously to make this house look as good as possibly we can. That's whether we sell it or whether we stay in it for the long term. So I think, like, just in the nature of capitalism, I mean, it's always in our tent to do our best possible and to make everyone happy and, you know, to appreciate the value of our neighborhood and appreciate the value of our house. So if we were thought we were doing this to our own detriment, I don't think we would be doing it. So I just want to make that point. I think a lot of this is kind of a, it's a matter of opinion, so it's really kind of hard to judge. But, you know, obviously, we're just doing the best we can, so I just want to make that quick point.
We are considering...
Especially if it's just isolated just to the physical appearance. Yeah, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Oliver. We actually, one of the reasons why we have hearings like this is to allow the public to come and make their voices heard, and whether it's their opinion, or if it's a matter of right, or if it's a matter of anything else, it doesn't matter. They get to come and have a voice, and that's what they're doing. Ryan, you have a hand up?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's just still...
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I was supposed to say that, you know, we have to think about the character of the neighborhood as we see it.
Absolutely.
So that's gotta be factored in. I mean, I don't see any of the detached garages in this area, so that's something that we'll have to think about.
Do we see any other hands or anything else? Anybody have any other questions? Yes, sir.
I believe if, like this house like that, you know, it will increase the value of the area. It's not going to decrease the values of the area. That's why, you know, when I heard the neighbors say that, you know, I said, maybe they see it another way. But the right way, hear something like that correctly, that will increase the value of the area. That's my opinion.
Thank you. It's a, it's a big leap into the setbacks. It's a good 20-foot, 21-foot setback, not variance, but a setback special permit, and that's a lot. So, all right, well, let's... Oliver, you got your hand up again?
Yes, sir. This is kind of an open-ended question, because I don't know the data off the top of my head, but I would be interested to know what number of houses in that neighborhood violate setbacks, because I'm pretty sure it's more than half. And I'm saying the main house, and not an accessory, like a garage that's attached. I'm pretty sure more than half the houses in the neighborhoods violate either a front setback or a side setback. So I'm gonna make that point as well.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue that. The zoning law, though, is a 50-foot setback, so...
That's new.
And that's a new zoning law.
Yeah, it's a new house.
And so it's, and it's a new house. So you've met that criteria, and now you're asking for a special permit to step over that line. That's what we're looking at. So, well, without seeing any other hands or anybody else have anything else to say, I recommend that we close the hearing.
Make a motion. We close the hearing for 30 Birch Road for a special permit to construct a detached garage.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next hearing, 7:10.
Now, is this another?
It's a new hearing.
It's another hearing?
This is a new hearing.
I didn't think it... Oh, you did? One second.
This hearing is pertaining to Thomas Mann Circle, which I am in a butter too, so I am going to recuse myself and go sit in the gallery.
I don't see it in the folder, though. Oh, okay. Where? Oh, okay.
Is Mr. Kerrigan here?
I'm alone. I'm alone. She printed it out, but she doesn't know who has it.
Oh. Do I have the notice of hearing?
Yeah, she printed one copy, she said. It's not in our folder.
I don't know that I have it. It's a beauty. David, you don't have the notice of hearing that was printed out, do you?
Um, no.
Gotta do it again?
All right.
Good point. So while we're getting that notice up, for housekeeping for voting purposes, Courtney and Chris, have you, who was the last one to vote? We could alternate.
It'd be Mike and Courtney. There are all votes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm full tonight.
Okay. Forgive me on that. Mike just stepped out.
Yeah, just Mike. Mike and Courtney.
Or if one has a preference not to vote.
If you don't pick me, you don't have to do roll calls.
We're not gonna let you out for that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good luck.
So Mike, what we're discussing is we're gonna use one of the alternates for voting. So it's either yourself or Courtney, and I don't know if anyone's had, I don't know who had an opportunity last to vote. I don't think you've had an opportunity yet to vote. Courtney, have you voted yet?
Uh, I don't remember. But seriously, if you avoid me, you don't have to do roll calls, so I'm going. Not me, not it.
It seems like you're deferring, so...
Oh, absolutely. We have a newer member. He should have the joys.
All right, so Mike will be our voting member.
All right, we're all set here. So notice here by getting in accordance with Chapter 48, the Massachusetts General Law is in any old amendments there to that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals on Wednesday, June 26, 2024, at 7:10 p.m. in room 114 of the Noble Town Hall, one of the great lane of Mass. The applicant, Patrick Kerrigan, Jr., requests an appeal pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 8 and 15, separately of the building permit number RB 24-000157, 9 Thomas Mann Circle, and building permit number RB 24-000158, 11 Thomas Mann Circle, due to the material conditions and requirements of the comprehensive permit, which remain unmet with deficiencies to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the butters and the natural environment. Reference to Centers Map 23, block 76, lots 71, 9 and 11, in the R3 zoning district.
Thank you. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Kerrigan in just one second. I just wanted to, it's a lengthy submittal, and I thank you for that. I just wanted to clarify, and you can clarify this for us, is that you're asking for two things. You're asking the ZBA to appeal the building permits and not issue building permits until this matter is resolved. That was the first request, I believe. And secondly, you're asking that the ZBA separately consider an issue in deceased order with respect to the order?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just so we're clear on what you're asking for. And I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you very much, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
You're gonna use the mic.
Thank you very much for your time and for your consideration of our appeal of the building permits at 9 and 11 Thomas Mann Circle. My wife and I have two young children, and we have lived as direct abutters to the Lakeland Hills project for approximately two and a half years. During that time, what we have been subjected to is beyond unacceptable: rock crushing, hydraulic hammering, extreme vibration and noise, dust in the form of fine particulate matter that is known to cause acute and chronic respiratory and health problems, and, among other things, blasting. On more days than I can count, the activities that were taking place basically right up on top of us, such as hydraulic hammering and rock crushing, made our home quite literally unlivable. Words such as rock crushing, hydraulic hammering, and dust unfortunately cannot possibly convey what in reality it means to have massive rock crushing machines operating in effect right on top of you, or to have huge excavators each making repeated concussive and crashing booms, breaking up rocks hour after hour and day after day, in effect, right outside one's door, or to have one's driveway and cars completely caked in dust, and unfortunately, to know that dust also made it into each of your son's young lungs. And as a threshold rhetorical question, I must ask, why was hydraulic hammering and rock crushing even occurring on this site in the first place, especially right on top of a residential dwelling? What the developer was issued was a comprehensive permit to build homes, not to break up rocks with excavators, and then crush those rocks with massive machines. We might as well have been directly abutting an industrial rock quarry and rock crushing plant. To the extent the developer had surplus rock on the project site, the developer should have taken that rock off-site for processing. Why didn't they? I imagine the developer saved a lot of money and possibly made money, especially if they sold the crushed rock, by doing all of this work on-site. So I have another rhetorical question, which is, why in the world was the developer allowed to externalize its costs onto my young sons, my wife, and me? Because make no mistake, that's what's happened. I also want to mention that we have grave concerns and a lot of questions relating to all of the blasting that occurred on this site, both with respect to the manner in which it was conducted and its impacts. This is yet another glaring example where we believe that we have been put in a situation where the developer has externalized its project's costs onto us as abutters. We're here tonight to say enough is enough. Our appeal demonstrates that even though material conditions of the comprehensive permit were not met or satisfied, this project nonetheless proceeded. As a lawyer, I remain dumbfounded by that fact. In the professional world that most of us in this room inhabit, there are rules, and those rules are followed. When the rules are not followed, there are consequences. And generally, when someone has shown it can or won't follow the rules, at a minimum, enhanced compliance measures ensue. As a former Obama administration political appointee in Washington, D.C., who's also worked for a member of the U.S. Congress and at the State House in Boston, I think it's fair to say I know something about government and how it's intended to function. As we all know, the rule of law is a bedrock principle of this country. It's a bedrock principle because rules create predictability, which enables, among other things, a generally efficient economy and a clear and transparent understanding of rights, which citizens rely upon the government to protect. When rules are not followed and rights are not clearly defined or protected, inefficiencies are imposed on the economy, transparency is diminished, and there begins to be a loss of trust and confidence in government, which, among other things, we know ultimately threatens democracy and freedom. Now, over the past decade or so, we've heard a lot of concerns, even alarm, about the state of our democracy. For what seems like years, The Washington Post even has run a banner at the top of its webpage decrying that "Democracy dies in darkness." To the extent that we agree that democracy is fragile and that it has faced challenges in this country, it is an easy out or excuse for many of us to train our focus on Washington, D.C., and Beacon Hill and to blame the politicians. But the reality is that apathy on the part of the governed citizenry is as great a threat to democracy as is any politician. I can tell you from personal experience that this project has created apathy. My wife and I began to view our attempts to protect ourselves as futile. People in the neighborhood similarly have talked about the futility of even showing up tonight, showing up here tonight and participating in this meeting. When citizens become apathetic and non-participatory in government and the democratic process, accountability over government is vastly diminished, transparency and the rule of law are threatened, and democracy itself is undermined. So while the word "government" tends to invoke thoughts of political or government officials in either Washington, D.C. or Boston, the reality is that for many citizens, their most tangible and concrete interactions with government occur at the local government level through interactions with planning boards, zoning boards, conservation commissions, tax collectors' offices, and the like. It's fair to say, then, that what occurs at the local government level goes a very long way toward either creating confidence and trust in government or alternatively sowing the seeds of apathy and trust in government, or alternatively, sowing the seeds of apathy and civic disengagement. Put another way, it is arguable that the thousands of local governments across this country collectively have more power to influence the state of our democracy than does any one politician. Tonight, then, we ask you to do the right thing, to protect the rule of law, and ultimately, to do your part in protecting and preserving democracy itself. We thus respectfully request that you grant our appeal and further, that you hit the pause button on a project that we have demonstrated has manifest compliance deficiencies and that has caused repeated and significant harm to abutters. Doing so will enable the town to reasonably and methodically work with the developer and abutters to create and establish a situation where appropriate controls and monitoring are in place and that project rules are followed, which is absolutely necessary in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of abutters to this project and the natural environment. Thank you. And I believe there are other townspeople here who also would like to share their views with you regarding this matter. But very quickly, on a separate note, I would just like to add, I understand that the town council's here. I was actually gonna ask the members of the board if, at some point in the next week or two, you could facilitate a meeting with me and the town council so that we could discuss, I believe there's a buffer zone, a designated buffer zone, that was created in connection with this comprehensive permit. And we just wanna make sure that, that our understanding of the, the status of that buffer zone and its preservation, that we're all on the same page with respect to that. So we'd appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with you if that's possible.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Kerrigan. Before I, before I over it up to the other board members and in the public, I'd like the developers here, Owen, I don't know if he wants to respond through the chair, if you'd like, or the vice chair, not have a back and forth. If you'd like to address anything, I'd be happy to hear it.
Sure. Thank you. Owen Kelly with Lakeland Hills LLC. There's, I was surprised to get the appeal here. And there's, there's kind of two pieces of this. There's the substance of the appeal and the questions and concerns that are raised. And I've worked for numerous different developments in the town, and we've faced questions on any of them. There's always concerns and things like that. And I, my first priority is always to make sure that any concerns of abutters, townspeople, compliance issues are addressed. So there are some questions about the validity of this appeal, but I don't want that to, like, counteract the discussion about the concerns that are raised. So I'll, I'll bring up the, the appeal, like, the technical, the legal questions about the appeal. And Chris Agostino's here to, you know, help answer those a little bit back and forth. But like you said, I am happy today, and I've kind of gone through all of the appeal concerns and questions, and I'm happy today to discuss those with the board, kind of discuss the history of, of any kind of conversations that have gone on and go through them, you know, one by one. As mentioned, or rate, question raised by Patrick, on one level, there is an agreement between Patrick's property, the town, and the development that we would preserve, or that a parcel would be preserved as a no-touch buffer. And the owner of the property that Patrick's in would not appeal the project. Again, that is not in any way, and I've tried to facilitate conversation between me, Patrick, and the town.
Can you explain that again, Owen?
Yeah, there's an agreement. So there's a, a section on the plan for this project. Right behind Patrick's house, his house comes to within like 10 feet of the property line. The previous owner of his property had concerns about the project, and there was a many, many, you know, this project has gone on for many, many years. And basically, a set of, a chunk of land was set aside as a no-touch buffer zone. In that is language that, that basically, the project would set aside this no-touch, and, you know, appeals, you know, wouldn't happen to the board from that property. Again, I don't think anybody's goal is to shut down concerns. And I think Rich can attest to the fact that, you know, we've been regularly addressing any kind of concerns that have come up throughout this process. Again, the dust question came up a couple of years ago, and, you know, we still made sure that it was addressed and, and all of those kind of things. Now, we don't, that agreement was made with the previous owner of the property. Patrick was supposed to be notified. He indicated to me at one point that he was never notified. We, I don't know if that's true.
That's true.
You were, that you were never notified?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. And so that's, that's another issue altogether, because that was part of the agreement with the town. Anyways.
Just a quick, sorry.
Just to direct it through the board, through the board, please.
Yep, sorry.
And like I said, this is second, it's not something.
Yes, I want to get into, I'm, I'm gonna ask town council a few questions in a, in a moment, but I want to, I want to get some discussion here.
Yep.
On, on Mr. Kerrigan's concerns relative to the site. I've, I've read this, and forgive me if I missed some things, but generally, he's raised a lot of issues relatives to dust, erosion, some noise, possible blasting. I think those are the, in my view, generally what the concerns were. They had specific impacts in numerous occasions, but generally though, as a broad blanket, I think those were the major concern types.
So, so I broke down, I kind of went through the permit to, if you'd like to
Please.
Kind of move into the, the concerns that were raised.
Yes, I'd like to, yeah.
I kind of broke them down into five different groupings. Blasting was a large one. Is blasting allowed? I think there's a question raised about if blasting is allowed. Has blasting affected nearby houses? And what is, is there a process to make sure that protections are in place for abutters? This is one of them. Another one is dust, right, which was raised here. Work hours were raised by Patrick here, a question of, you know, there have been working, people working outside of past the approved work hours in the permit. And is there a fix for that? Another one was runoff and erosion controls. I think Patrick references specifically an issue from February. And then, a last one, which I'll, which is referenced a lot, but I'm gonna kind of summarize into one, is where all the pre-construction requirements met. And so specifically, were plans reviewed, final plans reviewed by the town? And was there a SWIP in place? Many places in this appeal, it's referenced that there's no SWIP in place. Each of these, you know, has, you know, Patrick and I have talked about some of these. Some of them I haven't heard of until this appeal. But I've kind of gone through each of them.
Do you want to go through them in a little detail now, the ones you outlined?
Happy to.
That'd be wonderful.
The first one I wanted to start with was the SWIP. I think in most of this appeal document seems to reference that there's no SWIP in place. I just wanted to reference, there is a SWIP in place, and it's been reviewed by town engineers, by the town planner and the building department. We had a pre-construction meeting per the, the permit process back in the end of 2021. We actually had more than one meeting where we went through extensively through the pre-construction requirements before the road work was even started. And so we went through the construction management plan, reviewed that back and forth with the town a couple of times. We went through the SWIP, and that SWIP, again, was filed and enacted in the whole process.
And just for anybody watching, the SWIP is the acronym for Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan.
Thank you. Thank you. So, so all of that is in place. And this is, I like to think that I am pretty reachable. Patrick has my number. I usually give it out to any abutter that has concerns. Most of the abutters that I've ever had a concern around the project have my number. I know I can be reached pretty immediately. Again, not to circumvent any ability of any abutter to come and ask the town the question, but the question, is there a SWIP, is something I could definitely answer. And again, there's a documentation of it and things like that.
Then you mentioned, I think, I think it's fair, it was one of the items was blasting.
Yep. So blasting, it's referenced in one note on the final plan somewhere, no blasting is allowed. And that's very much highlighted in the appeal process here. Many other places in the plan, and then very specifically throughout the comprehensive permit, there's a lot of detail about blasting, what the guidelines are for it, what the steps should be taken by us. All of those steps were done very thoroughly at the beginning of the process, including Patrick, but all of the abutters with wells and foundation within specific radiuses of the site were all contacted to inform them that blasting would be occurring and when the first, the first time blasting would happen.
Is blasting complete?
So at this point, we are not expecting to do any more blasting. We did the majority of it. We tried to condense it all to the very, very beginning of the site. A couple months ago, so a year or so after the, the initial time, we had, there was some additional blasting found on the opposite corner of the site from Patrick's property. At this time, we're not expecting any more.
I'll skip over to the next one, the work hours, if you could address that.
Yeah, so at the very beginning of the project, when we were starting the entry work, we had another abutter, you know, we, we had trucks coming to start to do the work. We had another complaint about work hours. They reached out to Rich, you know, the first time the issue happened. Rich reached out to me. I gave my number to the, the homeowner. He's right at the entrance to the left of the site. And I like to think that we were able to solve the concern, because he, you know, I gave him my number. He texted me. He said, hey, there's guys there this morning at 6:30. We told them not to work. They're not working, but they have their car on waiting to work at 6:30. We, you know, over the period of a couple of weeks, we're able to remove that issue from happening. Again, this is kind of the point that I, I like to think that I'm very available. Patrick and I have been talking via email and text message over the last two years. This is the first time in this appeal that I've heard somebody's working after hours. Again, we, there's a specific reference to somebody working on Labor Day. This is not our first project in town. All of our crews know there's no working on holidays in the town of Norfolk. We, actually before, sorry, Memorial Day, very specifically told all the crews, there's no working. Remember, it's Norfolk, it's a holiday. There's a text like our whole company sends out to the different projects, because that's pretty general in town, especially for Memorial Day. Now, it's, it's still our responsibility that it happened. And it's still absolutely, Patrick, I wouldn't stop him from reaching out to the town to say, hey, people are working outside of work hours. What I would hope is that both would be done, because if I get a text message saying, hey, somebody's working late, I can go and handle it right away. I think we have kind of a recorded history of about a month of people working, you know, half an hour later, an hour later, and then we're coming a little bit early, things like that. Again, something that needs to be addressed, but something that, in the past, when we've ever seen this issue before, when we, when we know about it, we're able to fix it.
Would, I don't know if it's appropriate. Would it be appropriate or helpful if there was some small signage out there, remind, you know, right there, work hours are and no holiday work? I mean,
Yep.
In addition to the email blast you do and things?
Yep. Happy to do that. And we always tell people too, like, for anybody, you know, you see somebody working outside of the hours, call the cops, you know, and they'll, they'll, I mean, I think that's what happened on Memorial Day. I think somebody called and they, they were sent home. But I'm happy to post signage.
By that time, people are already disturbed and
Yep.
Woken and things like that.
Yep. Happy to post signage about that. And this is where, you know, we'll go through the other two pieces.
Yeah, the two, it seems like some substance, the dust and the runoff erosion.
Yep. So the dust, the dust was an issue that happened, I believe, two years ago at this point. It was the first interaction we had. We were doing the, the heavy, heavy road work, and when they were taking the rock out and hammering it, it was creating a lot of dust out there. Patrick notified the town. We met on-site, and we were able to come up with a plan. We relocated all of the rock to the complete other side. There's a, there's a heavy wind that comes through the site, moving from, what is it, the south to the north through the site and carries it towards Patrick's house. So by relocating everything to the other side of the site, and, and I believe he, Patrick has that copy of that letter from Matt Tanis, where he's, we, we came up with a plan with the town, enacted that plan. And then I believe, after that, we did not see further issue with that dust problem, or at least one that we were notified of, or the town was notified of. So again, an issue was raised, and we found a solution, and then made sure that the solution was enacted going forward. So, so that's the dust one. I have not had a complaint about dust since then. We try to, you know, kind of keep an eye on it. But if one was, was raised, we would, you know, very quickly move to it. So the, the last, I'm sorry, is there?
No, I was gonna ask you, your comments on, on runoff and erosion.
So the, the last concern, and again, I would call it the other, like, the, the larger concern that's referenced many times in here, because it's, I think it's tied to the, the SWIP, if you will, is the erosion control runoff. In February, we had an erosion control failure. It is, it was on the lots behind Patrick's property. And basically, there's a very steep hill that almost acts like a funnel that water from the site basically shot down next to Patrick's property to a vernal pool that was near there. Patrick informed the conservation commission. Conservation commission and Rich reached out to us, informed us the issue. It happened because one of the road installers stockpiled a pile of material close to that spot, which there were erosion, there's a temporary stormwater basin that was designed for that space, that those temporary, the temporary stockpile basically, with big rainstorm, washed down, filled it, and then continued to, to run down the hill. As soon as we found out about it, we first rebuilt the entire temporary stormwater system, and then kind of beefed it up, if you will, and then made notice to everybody. And then we hired a wetland scientist to go and inspect the impact to the vernal pool and give us a recommendation for how to remediate the problem. We presented that plan to the conservation commission. They accepted the plan that was proposed by the wetland scientist. We completed all the steps recommended by the wetland scientist, and then had him come out and basically provide a report saying that all the remediation had been taken care of, presented that to the conservation commission. They accepted that, yes, all the work had been completed. And, you know, this, this looks good. Shortly after that, there was a conservation hearing to talk about extending the order of conditions. I believe that Patrick and council attended that meeting to ask conservation to not extend the order of conditions, and then also to increase inspections. Conservation's response was, no, we, we will extend the order of conditions, because issues like this do happen. Sometimes you have erosion control failures. That's why, you know, these, like, for instance, we just had the rainstorm today, tonight. While I was out there taking pictures tonight to make sure everything was holding up, the way that the, the SWIP is written, somebody goes out tomorrow, checks to make sure everything holds up, and if there's an issue, you know, rectifies that issue. But if an issue happens, you know, there's a process for making sure that anything that was effective is restored properly. And so that process was followed. So Conservation was happy with the work that was done, but they did accept Patrick's suggestion to increase, like, the number of inspections done by Conservation's, probably it's gonna be the conservation agent, but they may have an engineer go out and do inspections to make sure that in addition to our inspections of the erosion controls, that the town is periodically going and checking out the erosion control systems. Since that day, we haven't had any reported issues that we've found or that Conservation has found. There may have been small, you know, again, with a big storm like this, there may be small washovers and things like that. But that are all, again, quickly and easily rectified without any longstanding concerns, specifically because of this vernal pool that's located at the bottom of this hill. And, you know, interestingly enough, it's far enough away that it doesn't trigger any of the Conservation wetland reviews, but it's down, down gradient. So it makes sense that, but we put in significant effort to make sure that not only are we meeting the, you know, erosion control systems there, but again, we beefed them up to the point but again, we beefed them up to the point that even if other things fail, there won't be impact to Patrick's property or the vernal pool going forward. One, one of the pieces about this appeal is to stop the work on the two lots that are behind Patrick's property.
Before you get there, I'd rather just have you address the other concern, like the work concerns, not, not the, not the relief asked for at this moment?
Yep, yep, okay. I think, so I think that covers the majority of them.
So what I'll do before I open it up to the public and even my fellow board members, I'd give Mr. Carrigan, you'll have opportunity later on, but if you want to respond briefly to any of that, I think, because it'd be fresh in your mind, I'd give you that opportunity. You'll have the opportunity later tonight too, but.
Thank you, thank you very much. I would like to briefly respond just to a couple of things. And I would just ask, through the chair, oh, sorry, through the chair. So as far as blasting, the way that I look at the engineering plans, it's relatively prominently portrayed that blasting is prohibited. It's on the second page where most of the legend is. I didn't see, now granted, it's, it's in very small, very fine print, so it's possible that I missed it. I didn't see any other discussion in the engineering plans with respect to blasting. So I, we just want to make sure that that was clear and not, there was no confusion around that. No, maybe it's there and if, if it is, we'd love to see it. But I just want to note that, so there was no confusion about that fact. With the second point is the, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. So as I was digging into, you know, I guess what they call the jacket, the documents that relate to this project, it was becoming apparent to me, a lot of documents were cross-referencing a stormwater pollution prevention plan, but I couldn't find one that was applicable to this site. So I ultimately spoke with the town because as, as I drafted this appeal, I wanted to make sure that I was accurate. And so the day before I filed this appeal, I spoke with the land use team in Norfolk and it was confirmed to me that no one in that team had the stormwater pollution prevention plan. So, so I just want to note that. Apparently, it was delivered to the town, as I understand it, on June 5th, the day, the day that I submitted the appeal. As far, it was delivered to the town as far as the land use department goes. So I would just note that. I would also note, I think, I think the impression that you may have just been left with is that with respect to the rock crushing operation, we all met and we discussed it and the issue was resolved. That's, that's not what happened. What happened is, you know, I was reaching out to the town over a succession of months. First, with respect to the hydraulic hammering that was taking place right behind our house and then with respect to rock crushing. And, you know, in April, Owen kindly visited my house and we had a conversation and we talked about, at that point, rock crushing, as I recall. And, you know, and then there's some subsequent correspondence that Owen and Richard and I had within a week or two of that, if it's, if it wasn't even maybe within days, basically saying, so this, this is April of 2022. And when Owen and I spoke, I was left with the understanding that a good faith effort was going to be made to move the rock crushing operation away. But I was also told, prepare to live with it for a while, okay? And that's ultimately what happened because, and by the way, I had just started a new job, basically in very, you know, in mid to late 2021. And I was under the gun at work, working tremendous hours and did not have the bandwidth to be monitoring this project the way that I should have been, which I actually feel very guilty about now because of what I'm concerned about were consequences that happened to my family as a result. But the reality is that in July of 2022, the dust got so bad that I followed up with the town again and the, I think Richard probably came, I actually wasn't there, but I think I sent pictures or maybe that somebody sent pictures or somebody sent pictures to me. But Richard kindly came out, the health department kindly came out. And at that point, an order was made, I think in like on July 21st or something like that, which is reflected in here, basically saying, I think, I think they actually gave them three days. Still, they, they were still allowed to go for three, and then, and then they had to pack up and move. So it wasn't like.
My question is, is more like today, as we, as we're here this evening and since you've submitted, what are the major, not historic issues, but the present issues?
Well, the, I will just, I guess I'll contextualize that a little bit because the historic issues are relevant because it reflects a lack of compliance with the comprehensive permit. And I'll just quickly add to that, you know, you kindly mentioned there's issues with blasting and dust and hours and things like that. Those are a symptom of a much deeper problem. And the deeper problem was what I'm trying to get at in this appeal, which is that there were significant and lengthy material conditions that as far as I can tell through, through my study, were not met prior to the kickoff of this project. And it appears, unless someone, you know, and if someone has the documentation, I would love to see it. But it appears that a lot of these conditions that, that were, that were supposed to be fulfilled prior to the commencement of construction were not done so. And that is the crux of my appeal. These, these other things, frankly, and what's, what's frustrating to me as an abutter, they're happening because these, these conditions, or they're happening in my view because these conditions that should have been in place are not in place. Or we're not, or I should say, the conditions that were not fulfilled. I mean, if you, you know, so I, I think that's what I would request that the zoning board focus its.
So these historic violations or whatever you want to call them are ongoing today?
Some of them are, some of them aren't. I mean, you know, there was, at 6:41 in the morning on the Friday of the week that I submitted this, so that would have been June 7th, you know, there was stuff going on. I could hear it. I walk out the door in the morning, I can hear it. So I mean, it's, it's a mixed bag, but I think the reality is the crux, why I think this is so serious is because while these other, you know, let's broadly call them, I don't want to call them nuisances because that doesn't do them justice, but these things that are causing problems, they're, they're symptoms of a much deeper, deeper problem, which are these, in which I've tried to highlight in my appeal, these conditions which were not met. And then, just really quickly, the vernal pools actually are on our property. Just want to point that out. There's, so the vernal pools are on our property. And, you know, I would just ask with respect to the, Owen kindly pointed out that, you know, their view is that the, the wetlands are, are far enough away from this project where they don't need to be reflected on, on plans or whatever. I would just, you know, part of my, in my review, I didn't see any analysis that was done to determine that these wetlands did not need to be considered as far as the engineering plans or any environmental issues or anything else. So to the extent that that exists, I certainly would, would value the opportunity to take a look at it.
Thank you. So just, I'm going to open it up to everybody in a moment. Question for Town Council, you've, you've seen the submittal, you've seen the, the appeal, you've heard some of the substantive issues. My question for guidance for the board, again, there's, there are two asks here, I believe, the pending building permits and a cease and desist order. I just want to get your counsel on, your opinion on what the, whatever our findings are, our authority to act or not act on the appeal, on these issues?
Well, I'll, I'll start with a request for a cease and desist order. The zoning board doesn't issue cease and desist orders directly. There's a process in 40A where an aggrieved person will make a written request to the building department. Building Commissioner can choose to enforce or not. Either way, the aggrieved party is entitled to a written response from the building commissioner. That's considered a final determination that then can be appealed to this board. And then this board would either overturn, affirm, you know, affirm a part, overturn a part, depending on how the hearing goes. So, you know, in my view, a direct request to the board for a cease and desist order doesn't work.
The other request on the appeal is for the, for the building permits, the pending building permits, non-issuables.
In general, when you have a approved plan, you know, in this case, it's a comprehensive permit with plans showing the building lots, an appeal of the building permit, you know, would normally be an appeal that the, whatever was applied for in the building permit for some reason doesn't comply with what the plans require, you know, whether, whatever it is, size of the building, dimensions, design. What I am having trouble parsing is, and I'm not commenting, by the way, on whether the complaints are legitimate or not or whatever, but what I'm having trouble parsing is we're, we're talking about some conditions in the comprehensive permit, whether some of those conditions were supposed to be met before the permit issued. If that's the case, that would, that would have to be done through an appeal of the comprehensive permit, which we're past the time now, no one can appeal it. To the extent that wetlands issues may be a problem and there might be some part of this property that could be in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, there's a process where the aggrieved party could file with the Conservation Commission to look? I don't know. Certainly not this board that can work out any wetlands issues. And I'm also hearing, I think, some complaints that kind of relate to, again, not commenting on the validity either way, that, you know, might sound like private causes of action if there's trespass nuisance, trespass of water, whatever it is that this board can't sort out in a hearing like this. And then the one last thing I noticed and, and I just don't know is that there is an agreement between the development and Mr. Carrigan's predecessor. I don't know if the town is a party to it. I'd have to look at it, obviously, to opine further, but enforcement of a private agreement, this board can't do, I suppose, you know, the agreement might say something where the board might have some authority to consider or enforce things, but I'm just not sure that that's something that we can, you can consider.
All right, so, so that being said, still what I'd like to do now is open it up to my, to our board members for, for any questions. And if there are none from the, from the board, I'll, I'll let the public.
In my opinion, it's a building, a building official's decision that needs to be made first. It's not for this board to make. It's a building official that makes the make decision to get, grant the permit or to take it away. It's not for this board to even consider.
Yeah, normally the appeals.
If, if he makes a decision and they want to appeal the decision, then he come to the board, right?
That's normally what we get is appeals of the building commissioner's decision.
Well, there's two, two parts to that. A building permit is considered, you know, that's a final determination of the building commissioner that can be appealed. But it depends on what the appeal is specifically based on, which, you know, I've read the materials, I've listened to everybody and I am not exactly sure the specific, so whatever violation is of where the appeal is. There might be some, but a lot of these issues don't relate to the building, the issuance of the building permit.
Yeah, none of, I mean, those are border health issues to me, right? So the blasting is noise, the dust, those are all border health issues. They should be addressed through the border health.
All right, whether or not we take action on this one way or the other, it is a public hearing, so I am going to, and people are here, so I'm going to use our time to open it up to the public. If anybody has any questions or comments? Oh, someone has their, I can't read the name, so Christopher, Mr. Agostino, I believe?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Christopher Agostino, I'm counsel for Lakeland Hills LLC. Owen was adamant that I play second fiddle this evening because as you can tell, his, his goal really is to identify what the actual physical concerns are on the ground and how he can solve them. I, I believe that's been his approach with all of his developments in town and throughout the Commonwealth and it served them well over time. So it remains that Owen's here to solve the problem. And I, I don't want to detract from that, which is why I planned to just chime in afterwards. That being said, I, I think Town Council actually identified the very issues that, that I was going to speak to in that this really is premature as far as the process is concerned. And the first stop here really is the zoning enforcement officer and the building inspector in town to look through and first identify violations and what those violations might be. And I, I think that process is important because in reading through the materials before this board, it's apparent that those are technical points that the professionals can address and can explain how a SWIP works, where the blasting plan and procedures are included in the comprehensive permit. And yes, there was an errant note in the general notes, but if you look on page C3, or sorry, C-8.3, you'll see a provision in there about blasting and in compliance with state law. And, you know, the blasting plan, we knew there was going to be blasting on the site and I did have the luxury of appearing before this board and actually permitting this development and discussing all these, these points that Mr. Carrigan has, has raised with the board during the initial hearing. And the blasting plan is actually the conditions that are in the permit and that articulates certain additional requirements that were intended to address blasting. So, you know, I, I think the procedure is, is there so that these types of technical questions can be addressed and answered. Owen would be happy to go line by line with Mr. Carrigan and explain the SWIP, the blasting, which again, site work's completed, you know, we're really through the heavy part of it. So really, at the end of the day, Stonebridge and Owen really want to maintain open lines of communication and identify what the real concerns are as we sit here today and how we can fix them. And I had actually communicated with an attorney that, that Mr. Carrigan had engaged on the Conservation Commission side and I directly asked, what exactly is it that we can address? And I still don't have an identification of what we can do to solve his concerns. So, you know, just adding some gloss to the, the procedure and the process and again, echoing Town Council's description of, of the process and what it looks like to actually ask the zoning board to overturn a decision of the building inspector or non-action of the building inspector. You're, you're familiar with it as well from what I just heard in terms of the comments. So I don't, I don't need to belabor the point, but wanted to just say that and reiterate that, that Owen's here and he wants to identify issues and solve problems.
Thank you, Consula. There was a few folks in the audience, or I don't know if anybody has any questions, concerns, or anybody on Zoom, this would be the time. I don't see anybody. Oh, there's a hand, if you want to identify yourself, sir.
I live at 12 Stop River, I'm on the other side of that.
Okay, talk, speaking to, your name and your address, please?
Mohit, 12 Stop River.
Thank you.
So I'm on the other side of Mr. Carrigan. So I get to be appreciative of the runoff, right? You said the site work is done.
I just talked to the board.
You said the site work is done, but yet there's an excavator right behind my house. Just wondering, is that going to continue? Because that's part of the issue that we're facing. We're still hearing the noises, we're still hearing the hammering. And I'm not talking about hammering, I'm talking about a machine hammering on rock behind the house.
So your question is, is the site work complete?
Yes, have we moved away from, from that, that area that we're talking about behind our house? Is the site, you mentioned that the site work is complete. Are the machines moving away from there? Because they're still sitting there.
Owen, would you like to address that?
Thank you. So when we referenced that the bulk of the site work was done, we were kind of describing the, the road work, right? So, the road work. So there's a huge amount of effort that goes in. This is where all the blasting, you know, was done and saying, we need to get the road in at the very beginning of the site. That's when all of the heavy, heavy, heavy work and regular blasting and hammering and, and things like that were done. So that's all complete. Now we are in the house, you know, the, the home building side of the project. And when we transition into kind of talking about how do things look going forward and where things are for the better. where things are for the better, all of the houses that are abutting and behind these, the lots that we're describing here are under agreement. And all but one, so the two that are appealed today, the foundations, because the town has a process to do foundation and building permits separately for a couple of different reasons, but the foundations on the two lots being appealed are actually already installed. So those foundations are in place, and one of them, because the building permit, the full building permit was granted, is actually completely framed. We have one more that is kind of in that general region, and we have already submitted for that building permit. And our suggestion for relieving these homeowners of the burden of the noise and things like that is for us to complete the work as quickly as we can while making sure we're maintaining very rigorous control over the erosion and things like that. There is noise, absolutely, you know, the process is not a quiet one. However, there are very real expectations set in the permit that we plan to and really work to abide by. Two of our other projects were right in the center of downtown, they had similar requirements for work hours, and sometimes they had specific calls about this.
Let me just ask this gentleman, has he answered your, I mean, you may not like the answer, but has he answered your question?
No.
No. Could you repeat your question?
The reason why he hasn't answered my question is he's going on and on, but my specific question
Please, go right ahead.
My specific question is, where the hill is, on top of that hill, there's supposed to be a buffer zone, there should be no equipment there, there's an excavator parked there, they're hammering on rocks above that area. When is that going to be done? Because once that's done, yes, you're right, there won't be any noise there.
Could you address that specific?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Just to be clear, there is no equipment in the buffer zone. The buffer zone has been maintained, erosion controls have been in place. The equipment is working.
The buffer zones clearly marked somehow?
Yes, clearly marked somehow and clearly delineated with erosion controls. I was just out there looking at them during this rainstorm, that's why my boots are quite wet. And those controls are in place and have been heavy, there's daily scrutiny on them, making sure that, especially when we're building these houses. As far as the timeline goes, again, we've applied for the last building permit there. We are not expecting to, based on the height of the foundation, we're actually not expecting, hopefully, cross our fingers, to hit any rock there. There will not be any blasting on that lot regardless. Like I said, the blasting is done, and we are very much hoping, based on the grades of that lot, that there will be no hammering. That being said, again, if permit is granted and there's no weather issues, the foundations should be in within two months, and all of the outside, you know, we're done by October with all the outside work, you know, that'd be the time we would be looming and seeding. And then we are moving to, again, we've completed everything on that side of the site.
Thank you. Is there anybody that we haven't heard from this evening who would like an opportunity to be heard? Please go right ahead, sir. Just identify yourself and your address.
George McLaughlin, 16 Stop River Road, just to the left of Patrick. While we certainly don't feel the impacts as much as Patrick does, because he's right behind them, the activity, I can certainly attest to the fact that there has been, work is working very early in the morning, 6:30 or so.
And that's been fairly recent, sir?
It has been, yes, yeah, over the past year or so that I can remember. I have heard rocks being crushed, and to my knowledge, I thought that wasn't permitted. I wonder why, as Patrick asked in his opening statements, why that rock isn't being removed off-site and crushed at a facility. I can attest to those facts. They don't bother us as much as they do Patrick because we're protected a little bit more, but I can attest to them, and I wonder, there is a comprehensive permit in place, and I wonder what proactive measures the contractor is taking to adhere to that permit other than waiting for residents to make complaints and take care of it then.
Thank you. Owen, I'll give you an opportunity to respond.
What I'll just say is that there is no crushing. Hammering is a normal part of the excavation process. When a foundation is dug out, if we find ledge in the ground, there is not a way to remove, to take that ledge, to move that rock anywhere, except for hammering or blasting. In an effort to reduce the blasting, you know, we've, especially when we get to these foundations, we've resorted to hammering. Any crushing operations have been located on the far, far end of the site, which was determined with the Board of Health, you know, a while ago, as kind of the furthest distance from generally all butters. So we basically moved any kind of crushing operations to the most fair spot on the site that kind of takes the burden off of butters. Again, crushing is another normal part of subdivision work, there's no state rules about crushing on-site or anything like that, but there was a specific concern about the dust that was being generated, and between that and the locality to Patrick's property, again, this place was chosen. And since that time, we've maintained all crushing operations, and still right now, you can go and see all the crushing equipment is in the location defined by the Board of Health.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who hasn't been heard this evening who would like to be heard? Mr. Carrigan, do you have anything new to add?
Nothing new. I just would like to very quickly respond to town council with a question.
Thanks very much.
Which, so, sir.
You can direct it right through the
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, so in chapter 310-7, spot 2, building permits, it says, "No building permit shall be issued until the construction or alteration of a building or structure, as proposed, shall comply in all respects with the provisions of this bylaw or with a decision rendered by the zoning board of appeals." So what I'm struggling with here is the appeal demonstrates in a number of different ways how they are, in my view, not complying with a decision rendered by the zoning board of appeals. So I don't think it's very difficult to get to the point where one could, I mean, it's pretty logical to me that this is a very valid appeal, and I'm struggling with why we would construe it any other way.
I'll ask Consul for an opinion on that.
Well, I didn't say the appeal wasn't valid. I think I said the opposite. I think that the building permits were issued, you had the right to appeal them, and you did, and we're here and the board has to consider it. As far as your, you know, the initial question, that's what the board has to decide, and I'm not going to offer an opinion on that because it's not my role. Secondly, there's a lot of issues that are complaint of here. Some relate potentially directly to the issuance of the building permit, some might not. My only point was that in reading the entire submission, it was hard to parse exactly what the issue was. I mean, one example I'll give, which is just an example, and, you know, the board can disagree with this, but if there was a water runoff issue that was a technical violation of the permit that has since been solved, that's not a basis to appeal the building permit that was issued long after the fact. Now, you might disagree that it's been solved, totally fine, that's up to the board to resolve, but that's just an example where there may have been issues for a long time with this project. Not every single one of those issues directly relates to the issuance of the building permit.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I'm sorry.
Please go right ahead.
The issue that I was trying to raise, because if I understood your guidance maybe 20 minutes ago, it was basically the appeal of the building permit is not the appropriate vehicle, this isn't, you, in effect, I don't, I think what you were saying was, if I understood correctly, I don't really have standing to appeal these building permits. And what, in, with, right? I mean, is that, is that what?
No.
I don't think it was a standing issue, I think, I think it was the wrong venue, but...
Another example, if they're doing work outside for the work hours, that's an enforcement issue. That's not really an issue for why a board would overturn a building permit that was issued. And that was one of the issues you raised, so that's just one example.
Okay, right. So standing wasn't the right way to phrase it, apologies, but I think what I'm, what I'm driving at here
It's not standing.
No, that's what I said. Standing was not the right way to
Well, right, right. No, no, I know that, I agree, but that's not what I mean. It's identifiable issues related to the building permit. A work hour issue, if it happened, it's a technical violation and there's ways to deal with that. But if there was a work hour issue at some point, that's not related to why or why not a building permit should be affirmed by the zoning board.
But, sorry, but what I'm, what I'm saying here is that the way that this zoning bylaw reads, "No building permit shall be issued until the construction or alteration of a building or structure, as proposed, shall comply in all respects with the provisions of this bylaw or with a decision rendered by the zoning board of appeals." And the construction activity is not, is not consistent or complying with a decision, i.e. the comprehensive permit, that was issued by the zoning board of appeals. So it seems to me entirely appropriate that I would be able to make the case that I'm making in this appeal with respect to these building permits. I'm struggling to understand why that wouldn't be satisfactory. First, setting aside the validity of anything I'm saying in the appeal itself, just from a purely process standpoint, I'm struggling with why I would not be entitled to appeal the building permits based on problems with the underlying comprehensive permit, given how I read this sentence right here.
I understand your question. I'm being asked to go outside, I think of my
You don't have to answer if you don't feel comfortable.
Yeah, but I don't want to, I'm not trying to completely dodge the question at all. I mean,
Mr. Chairman?
I'll just go back to the hours example, just to pick one, pick one. If they did work on the site at 6:00 in the morning six months ago, and then that isn't an ongoing issue, that doesn't really relate to whether a building permit should issue or not. That's an enforcement issue that you can bring up with. I guess, you know, the developers offered to call, people could call the police. Normal Avenue is seek enforcement through the building commissioner for violation of a condition of a permit. To the extent that the zoning board wants to consider whether a past hour violation is a reason not to issue a building permit now, I suppose you could consider that and vote however you want to vote on it. It's, there's a difference with enforcement and building permit appeals, and as I mentioned before, the cease and desist, you know, general cease and desist request is not what, you're looking for one, that's a building, that's a building commissioner decision, that's not the zoning board decision. So am I answering your question?
You are, thank you very much. And just to confirm, so the zoning board does not have the authority to issue a cease and desist order with respect to the comprehensive permit?
Well, I think we could issue it, I don't know if it's enforceable. I mean, we could ignore town council, but I think your question is a little bit different than that. Is it enforceable?
Right.
It would easily likely be appealed and wouldn't stand up. We could, we could do it, but toward the end.
Understood. So the consensus of the room is that the ZBA does not have the authority to issue
I haven't polled the board, but we're just getting advice from Consul.
That's what chapter 40, chapter 48 says that there's a zoning, you know, the zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner is the person who does that. And if you requested one and you were not pleased with what the building commissioner responded with, then you could appeal that order, and then the board could either affirm it or overturn it, or affirm in part, overturn in part. But a direct request to the ZBA for a cease and desist order is not the proper avenue, and if they issued one and it got appealed, it would likely be annulled by a court.
Okay. Owen, you have to hear from me one more time?
Actually, would you mind if, I think, I was
Consul, yep. Your hands up?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, and I appreciate how town council's trying to describe it, the specific issues complained of in the appeal are all of an enforcement nature. If the appeal had identified that the building was in the wrong location, then that would be an ascertainable violation of a clear condition in the permit as to how the building should be built. All of the issues identified are ongoing management and site control, construction procedure oriented issues that would first have to be adjudicated by the zoning enforcement officer as to whether there is a violation that exists at this moment. And that would be the first stop to adjudicate that type of question. So I think town council articulated it, but just to give that example to kind of crystallize it for the board, the person charged with determining whether there is a violation at the first stop for things like ongoing maintenance, you know, submission of plan requirements as a precondition, those things would need to be specifically brought to the attention of the zoning enforcement officer and adjudicated there first.
Thank you. The, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the hearing in a moment. I didn't know, Mr. Carrigan, before I do that, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just had one, you know, because, you know, one of the comments that we were discussing is what outstanding issues there might be and concerns moving forward, and while, you know, the board might render a decision otherwise, you know, do you want to address what seems to be, what I've tried to gauge is like the two current outstanding concerns that are, that are current, like relevant to that today, tomorrow, yesterday.
So, Mr. Carrigan, do you have a?
Well, so I think I've identified two.
Okay.
One is the work hours. This was a, this is the first time this came up was with the appeal. I was notified of it. We have, you know, obviously sent a lot of messages around. I would hope that Mr. Carrigan, and I don't know if he's, if you're comfortable or not, again, you do have my number, but you can continue to send the town notice of those. I promise you, this is an issue that's come up in the past. We work hard to keep it from happening, but we're not present on-site full-time.
Okay.
But we're happy to enact any issues to resolve that. That was number one. Number two, and again, it's a little more broad, but is a general concern of both applicant and town enforcement of permit, comprehensive permit conditions. You know, I'll let, you know, everybody be their own judge of the process, but I will say the pre-construction review process, so after the permit was done, to when we were allowed to start actual work on the road, was, was very, very long and very, very detailed with the town. We have a significant amount of emails, meetings, meetings on-site across the board. It was almost a six-months process from the
You want to address issues today, not historic?
Well, so the condition today, which is, again, a little more of a, it's a concern, active concern, is general oversight and compliance, and I just wanted to speak to my experience with the town of Norfolk and all of the people. If there's a concern raised to Rich or to the building inspector or to the Board of Health, there is a very quick and immediate process that happens, and it's happened with previous concerns of Patrick, Patrick's, and that still will happen going forward. That's, that's it.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Carrigan, I'm going to probably ask for a motion to close the hearing. I'll give you an opportunity. You've heard a lot here tonight, you've heard from our town council, and I didn't know if you wanted us to close the hearing or if it was any benefit to you to withdraw your application, or did you want us, did you prefer that we close the hearing and at some point, whether it's tonight or our next hearing, deliberate and make a decision? It's your, it's your call. I just wanted
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. No, I'd like you to respectfully request that the board consider the appeal.
Okay, thank you.
And I very much appreciate your consideration and your time. Thank you very
Thank you.
May I make one more comment?
Please go right ahead, real quick.
Just to the speediness of the board's decision, because these two lots do have active foundations, one of which, again, is framed, but one of which the building inspector is waiting the board's decision to, the foundation is in, but to start the framing. If one of the goals of this is to reduce the time in which the butters are burdened, waiting an extended period of time for the board's decision will have an impact
waiting an extended period of time for the board's decision will have an impact on that. That's all.
Thank you. Before we entertain a motion to close, I just want to go back to town council. I'm afraid if I close the hearing or the hearing gets closed, maybe we can't get your opinion. I don't know, but you're here, the hearing's open. I'll ask you again, I think you answered it a few times tonight. I just want to be clear for myself and the board members and everybody else. I think you've heard of what the requests are from the applicant. Can you give us guidance on whether it's the right venue, how, you know, what your guidance would be to us on this? Can we act?
Yes, there is a proper appeal of the two building permits that you have to consider. The board, as you discussed before, does not issue cease and desist orders. You review them after the building commissioner issues them and they get appealed. I mean, you correctly stated that you could just do it and that might be subject to appeal. I would just add that that's kind of the case with any case you consider is that you technically could do anything and then it would be subject to appeal because it's not within your authority. So I don't think the board can issue a cease and desist order, but the board should consider the building permit appeals because they're properly before the board, they're timely filed.
Can you give us more guidance on that? Now I'm more confused. I don't know if anybody else is, but-
I don't.
Would it still be more appropriate for the board to have gotten the building commissioner's input on this? To the extent that some of these things are really requests for enforcement, I think it's a little more than more appropriate that that's the process. But-
See, I think it's more appropriate if a, you know, a cease and desist is issued by the building commissioner because of these issues for people to further act on them as opposed to trying to get us to appeal the building permits. I'd rather see this cease and desist put in place before you-
Right, if we're to entertain the building permits, we're doing it on the grounds that there's a faulty building permit issued, some question with the permit.
You have to determine whether the issues that we all discussed tonight are grounds to overturn the two building permits.
Nuisances. You have to determine if the nuisance is enough to turn it over.
When you, if we're to overturn a building permit, I guess I struggle with, it sounds to me like it's more of a, that the permit never should have been issued.
Building permit?
Yes.
Yes.
That would be our reason for overturning it, not that there was other issues in the development.
Right, you have to tie your reason for overturning the building permit to particular reasons-
To that particular permit that that should not have been issued.
That we discussed tonight, yes.
So if that foundation was in the wetlands and the as-built was done on the foundation, then you can revoke the permit because it has not built as per plan. That's what you have the ability to revoke that permit is you went outside-
Well, the permit is already issued.
But they gave a set of plans and the plans are approved.
The permit is already issued.
The plans are approved. There's no issue with the plan.
We're being asked to, we're being asked to prevent the issuance of permits.
Well, for the building permit piece, the issuance of the building permit on that issue is the final act of the building commissioner. I suppose, you know, Mr. Carrigan could ask for him to revoke them, but the final act is the issuance of the building permit, which is an appealable decision. If he failed to appeal, to appeal the building permits within 30 days, he would lose that right and would never be able to appeal them again. So that's why the building permit piece of this is properly before the board and the board has to decide the issue.
And the applicant is asking for a cease and desist, and I believe he's also asking for non-issuance of permits.
He wants the frame not to happen. He wants the house not to be framed. They have the foundation-
He's asking for non-issuance of permits.
Of the permit to do the second part, meaning the frame.
They have the permit to do the foundations. Well, one foundation's in, the other one's not.
Two foundations and one's framed.
They're both in, okay.
Yeah, the third one hasn't started yet.
Okay.
Might be helpful to ask Mr. Carrigan on the cease and desist part of it, what specifically he's asking to be stopped. Is it just these two building permits or is there more having to do with the project, whether it be like a future lot that's going to be developed?
Fair ques, Mr. Carrigan, do you, it is, you've asked for a cease and desist with respect to this project in order for the town to work with the applicant in order to bring the project into compliance. It's a very broad statement. Sure was intentionally done that way, but could you give us more detail?
You know, I think that at a high level, the issue here is that we are right next to a 20-some-odd acre, 40-some-odd unit project that, in our view, reasonably speaking, has had a very negative impact on our family, our property, everything. And that in order for us to bring, and as I dug into the jacket and I saw how disordered a lot of things appeared to be, this seemed like the most prudent, reasonable way for, and I would think the town has an interest in it, I have an interest in it, in basically hitting the pause button on this project and everybody get together and establish, we're laid into it and there's a lot of, unfortunately, there's been a lot of damage done to date, but at least starting now, establish a rules of the road here.
I think what we're getting at, or at least I am, is that if the project's not in compliance, it might be proper to get an enforcement action or denial of an enforcement action before you come here.
Understood.
Okay.
Understood. And, you know, I'm not, you know, obviously, I'm in a very difficult situation here because I have small children and we're now two and a half years into this and I've got a lot of very deep concerns. You know, I've articulated some of them tonight. I have not articulated all. And there's a lot going on here and I need to protect my family, bottom line. So, I mean, if, but I also understand that, you know, so I don't want to put anybody here in a difficult situation. So if what you're telling me is that, you know, if the-
I'm not dismissing your concerns at all.
No, what I was going to say was like if it's, if what, you know, if it's, I still have to protect myself, but if what the consensus is that, you know, this should be withdrawn and refiled as an enforcement action, you know, I would consider doing that. But, you know, my only concern with that would be, as you said, I'm out of my 30-day window. So I lose that, I mean, unless you guys want to, unless you want to somehow, you know, create some type of a procedural way where I could re-initiate this if I needed to, which I couldn't get comfortable with. But, you know, I don't want to put you in a difficult spot, but I'm in a very difficult spot.
You could always ask for us to continue this. I'm not sure that we're, I'm not trying to tie your hands at all. I want to get a proper resolution to it.
So I guess my question would be potentially, if the goal is try to have a roadmap forward to resolve the issue, issues at hand, why wouldn't that be something to try to explore now until the next meeting to come back with some resolution? I mean, right?
So, I hear you, Richard, but the problem is that, like, you know, we've been, I've been in discussions now for two and a half years. And as, as I think hopefully has come to light tonight, it's, I'm not, I'm not getting anywhere with it. And, you know, they're still crushing rock up there. And, you know, I've got a son who is diagnosed with asthma at Boston Children's Hospital in April of 2023. I mean, this is, these are, this is real, okay? And if there's still a crushing rock up there, my concerns with this project are almost boundless. And, you know, I was advised that this was, this was the right, this was the right approach to take. And so, so that's why the appeal was filed, the appeal of the building permits was filed with you all. You know, so, and frankly, the way that I read this, it seems like that was reasonable guidance. I'm not, I'm a little bit struggling with why there would be any question about why this wouldn't be an appropriate appeal as far as, you know, as far as, you know, the grounds for the appeal. But, you know, if you guys, I mean, I guess what I would be comfortable with, if you want to say, well, we will continue this thing for two weeks or something like that, and then you want to, we, I can, we can talk in two weeks or a month, or two, in two weeks, and, you know, I'll say whether or not I would like you to actually consider the appeal. I could be comfortable with that, but what I have to be very careful of is losing my 30-day window.
I'm not sure when you say your 30-day window, what you refer to. You've already, you already have appeal in.
You already have your appeal in.
Understood, but I mean, what I don't want to do is affirmatively dismiss it.
Yeah.
No, you wouldn't be, because if we didn't act on it within 100 days, someone could argue that it's proved, so. But Owen has a question, if you don't mind me-
Yeah, sorry, I just have just a couple of quick points, and I think Chris also has a point, Augustino. The first is that, you know, I hear a lot of concern about losing rights. Again, a lot of the points raised seem to be about compliance as a whole, not with these two lots or any of the individual lots being done. And I just want to confirm to Patrick, and, you know, many people here will know, a cease and desist from the building inspector is always an option. We always have to be in compliance with the permit and he can issue a cease and desist at any time. So if tomorrow I were to have a giant erosion control issue, even if the board decided tonight to cancel his appeal and you lost your rights to appeal these permits, I could get shut down tomorrow. So you're, there's, all of the concerns that you've raised here are not specific to these lots and you will lose, you lose no rights as to the enforcement of these issues if the board, you know, makes a decision and denial of this appeal. As to the board's effect, we do have buyers on these two lots. And we've worked with the town for a long time. My goal is never to cause any issue, but if I were to, like, if tomorrow, like, or if this were to drag out for a period of time and our buyers were to walk away because they feel they're unsure of, like, when are we going to be able to build a house, like, things like that. You know, there's costs and things associated with that. So I would ask the board to consider, again, I have no, I have always, in any issue that's been raised across the town, I have always worked really hard to be, A, personally and individually and quickly involved, and to make sure that we find what the root of the problem is and to solve it. And I think, you know, again, we can't promise that issues won't come up, but I think we've always been able to achieve those problems. I understand Patrick is saying, hey, he's had issues for two and a half years. I would indicate that, you know, there was a period of time in which we were discussing things with Patrick, and then there was about two years in which I did not hear from Patrick until this February, or a year and a half. And I think I've always been very quick to come to respond and will do so. Thank you.
Thank you. So what I'm going to suggest, I'm sorry, go right ahead. I'm sorry, this is a clear, I can't always see the-
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, as to the building permit appeal, you know, I'm struggling to understand what exactly the goal is, given that the applicant remains committed to identifying existing non-compliance with site management issues and solving those concerns. The only site management issue that I've heard tonight that is not addressed is the hours of work, which is easily solved. The appeal of the building permits would be an attempt to essentially eliminate those houses from the development. And I just wonder, is that the goal or is the goal to identify problems and bring the site management concerns into compliance? So that's one issue. And then the comment was made earlier about a lot of these issues are permit conditions that are pre-endorsement of the final plan set. So if you recall, the process under 40B is the board goes through the hearing process and issues a comprehensive permit. The applicant is then required to comply with all of the conditions in the permit and then go back to the board with final plans that include things like final review from the peer review engineer, submission of SWIP, all those conditions, and then endorse the plan set. The zoning board endorsed the final plans as an indication that they reviewed all of those conditions, many of which Mr. Carrigan is now citing in his appeal. So to some extent, and going back to this whole idea that this is a building inspector issue to go line by line with Mr. Carrigan and figure out what it is in there that he thinks is not complied with, because many of those were already addressed when the final plans were endorsed by the zoning board back in 2021 or whenever that post-permit review was done. So, you know, the ship may have sailed on that, and going back to the permits now, I don't think that's the goal. So, you know, the appeal of the building permits, all the evidence is before the board to act on that, and there's nothing that's been identified as something that would require those buildings to go away. Rather, this is all an enforcement issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I quickly respond to some-
Real quick, please.
Absolutely. So, you know, oh, sorry. I don't think that, there's no, the motivation for the appeal is irrelevant, as far as I can tell. The facts are the facts. But I will note, and thank you for raising it, so, you know, would my, would I feel safer if there were not two houses sitting right on top of that hill? I certainly would. Because of all the blasting that took place, I certainly would feel a whole heck of a lot safer if there were not two houses sitting right up there, both of which are going to be on septic, both of which, I mean, as I've noted to this board, there was a lot, there was two years almost of blasting that took place. And one has to presume, one can only reasonably presume, that all the remaining ledge around there has been degraded, it's been weakened. And, I mean, when we have heavy rains like today, I literally sit in my house concerned about things just coming, toppling down that hill because of all the degradation that I'm concerned has had.
But I think if you're asking us to revoke the right to build the two houses, I think that appeal has long lapsed, that that was done by the comprehensive permit.
But whether or not it's reasonable to, I mean, it's reasonable to appeal the building permits, and I've set out everything in my appeal about why I think that's reasonable, but what I'm saying is, I got the sense here that we, I think the bottom line is, it actually, if, it actually would, as far as those two units, lots themselves, buildings themselves go, I've given you plenty of reason to consider whether or not there should be two buildings up there, I guess is a way to put it.
Okay, thank you. Does the board want to consider, if we close the hearing tonight, we're not going to deliberate and make a decision tonight, in our likelihood. Do we want to continue to the next hearing anyway? And if there's nothing new at the next hearing, we close the hearing and we can deliberate that evening. As opposed to closing the hearing tonight, at least if we keep it open, I think it gives us opportunity to seek more guidance from town council, which I'm sure he'd be thrilled to give us more guidance.
Give the guidance.
But I think, it's, all the ten motions-
It's nearly all compliance, that's what's going on in construction and monitoring.
Does the board want to make, does someone want to make a motion to close, continue? But I don't think we're going to deliberate tonight, unless you're adamant about it.
I don't, that's what I'm saying. I think if we close it tonight, we're not going to deliberate anyway for next time.
Right. So do you want to make a motion to, does someone want to make a motion to continue the hearing?
The board is, you know, let me close the hearing, let me close it.
Well, do you want to make a motion to close? Do you want to make a motion to continue?
I'm okay to close it. I feel that the board can, the board can contest that, depending on whether you want to second or not.
So he wants to make a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion if we close the hearing for nine and 11 Thomas Mann Circle for the appeal of building permits due to the requirements of the comprehensive permit.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion by anybody? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. All right. David, I think you're back.
Yeah, it's two different things, I promise.
Right, right.
But they're one hearing, right?
One hearing, yeah.
Yeah, so it's continue the.
Yeah. One application, correct. David, I think you're back in charge.
Cows upset. That's what I wanted.
No, it wasn't the cows.
His cows are in the.
Sorry.
Yeah. He's a half mile away.
I am.
I know you are.
But I do hear. I know they're, I know they're blasting and doing all kinds of stuff before seven o'clock, because I'm out there walking around, and I can hear it all the time.
This still goes back to the building. Yeah, we can't do that now. Different times.
And the hearing's closed, so I'm discussing.
All right, next.
Uh, I think you're.
Owen.
Sorry, yeah, this, I'll keep this one short, Owen Kelly for residents at Norfolk Station. We're requesting, well, actually, we're pretty sure we've started, because we started all the demolition on the site. However, a question was raised by one of the officials in town, and so we just came to either confirm that, and then also to technically request an extension to start construction. And just to give the board a little bit, there is a lot of discussion going on about, we purchased this project from somebody else, ways to improve the site, and maybe hit some different things that the town would like to see there. We think the site is pretty stable. We're continuing to stay in touch with boards as far as, you know, making sure everything is safe. But since those conversations are ongoing still, the extension seemed appropriate.
Can I ask a question?
By all means, ask a question to.
Not opposed to the extension at all, I just want to know if you can shed any light on if we might anticipate a change in some plans over there.
So I wouldn't say yes at this point, but because we've, we've, there's a lot of, we're getting a lot, we're getting a lot of input of potential stuff, and we're trying to consider them to see, again, what the town, what, what, what might like to be seen if that would work. So we've kind of run through a lot of ideas. Again, if at some point the board's indication is, no, we want to move forward sooner, we're welcome. This is really technical, because I think technically by the permit with the demolition started, you know, we've, we've crossed that, but we wanted to, like I said, make it official, so that way there was no, no concern from any other bodies here.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a timeframe of extension? Like, extended, like, how long, a week, 17 days?
Last year, we extended it one year. We're asking for another year extension, I believe. You know, hopefully after that, we wouldn't make an extension one way or the other. But again, this would be an ongoing conversation with the board.
This is not a hearing, this is just a decision we're making, right?
Yes.
Just need to make a motion if we would do that, right?
Correct.
I mean, I don't have anything against it. Does anybody else have anything to say about it?
The, the only thing I have to say about it is, there's been vacant buildings in our center for an extended period of time. And we've been trying to avoid, we've been trying to.
Avoid light.
Yeah. And, and in retrospect, if we add another year onto this, we could have, you know, we have a moonscape up here that's been forever, because nobody will do anything. But I don't want that to end up into being a pile of rubble, because you're in the middle of demolition, and now you've got another year extension, so you're gonna wait on it.
I will say.
I mean, I understand, I mean, there is a lot of good discussion that is happening, because I know that there's been some mixed-use thoughts, there's been some other things that have been presented to you guys as a developer, and I'm all for all that. But there's been a comprehensive permit already issued that was acceptable and is ready to go. If our extension benefits the town by these discussions and possibly a change, that's what our decision would be for an extension. And that's what I, I just want the board to know.
If, if a change was brought to us, though, what kind of hearing would that be? Do we have to now have a?
That I don't know, because I've, I've never dealt with a comprehensive permit that then changes.
I have done a number of them, and I typically, a modification is proposed, and it's the board assesses if it's a substantial or insubstantial change, and there's general guidelines.
Correct. I mean, we did do that for Tommy.
Right, but this is going to be, this could be a big, you know, modification, and, you know, it takes some time to. But at the same time, do you really need a full year?
I, I think so, I think so.
Well, now that you've started demolition.
Right, technically, I don't think.
Technically, you don't need an extension, correct?
That was, that was, exactly, that was, that was actually the first question that was asked.
If we give you an extension, pretty much, you could halt everything that you're doing now.
For 180 days.
For another 100.
180 days, so.
Yeah, for like 365 to, if we went for a year. If we go for a half a year, 180 days, as Mike says.
Oh, if you have a demolition permit, it's good for six months.
Right, so.
So one of the structures on the properties has already been demolished, so there's a house in the back that's gone.
Correct. But I, I just.
It just needs to have an inspection within six months.
Yeah. I, I, I just, I don't want to see.
You're looking for progress.
Yeah, I'm looking for progress.
Give me a little color to it, I guess.
Yeah, give, give me a little bit of something to, I don't know.
Sure.
I got nothing.
So I would say if we were in a, we had made the progress that we were at now in consideration of mixed-use in the center of town, and looking at the zoning to make something feasible from a development standpoint, you probably not even see that permit in the first place.
Correct, yeah.
And the idea to try to consider maybe this becomes a mixed-use site is really what we're trying to get towards, to see if it could work. To fulfill a goal of the town, as opposed to just straight-out residential. So that's why it's taken a little bit. There could be a pathway that could be through the conventional zoning that may need some adjustments to. So that's why there's a little bit of time needs to be needed in this case. So there's not a lot of properties in the center of town. We're necessarily trying to put as best effort we can to see if we can accomplish the goal. So I know people, I get it, the building's vacant. But I wish I'd love to go in a time machine, and we'd be in a different spot. But we're in a better spot now in terms of, I think, receptivity to understanding doing mixed-use and the financing involved with that, how it's challenging and so forth. It takes a lot of work, right?
It is a lot more challenging.
Oh my God, yeah.
So hence the time to try to.
You should just not be shortsighted on what could be a long-term plan.
Just make it a year.
Yeah, we just want, I mean, I, it's kind of like, if we have an opportunity, we want to try to explore. If we can, we could do it, awesome. If we can't, then we can, then we move forward. But we don't want to lose.
You're totally open to working with the town on trying to come up with a plan, a possibility plan, anyway?
Yeah, absolutely.
You're not just doing this to postpone, you know, having to outlay and start building something?
No. We, we're very proud of a couple of the projects we've done in town. Again, we inherited this one, it's a nice project. Even on its own, like, I think there are a couple improvements that we would make if we had designed it from the get-go. And so, so the board may see at some point if other options, other large-scale options can't be put together, don't work. You might, you'll probably see some smaller, like, in our mind, insubstantial changes to this project that might bring it into kind of more conformance with what I think the town wants to see downtown. Just a couple small improvements. But despite that, there's, there's a lot of desire for, again, the mixed-use piece. It's something we, yeah, has a lot more complexities to it. So we really want to figure out.
And that would be a substantial change to the.
That one, and it's tricky, it may mean dropping the 40B and going with a conventional zoning permit. Or like, going with the conventional zoning, getting that, and dropping the 40B. And then like, we said, it would be outside, though.
Because you'd have something that may have to go through town meeting, too, if you're doing zoning changes?
Potentially, yeah.
Hopefully not. I mean, we're trying to do all of this in conformance with one of the town's existing systems.
It was only, it was only things. All right, so what do you guys think?
I, I mean, I, I, a year, good?
All right, I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we agree to the request for an extension of comprehensive permits for the residences at Norfolk Station for one year.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Owen.
Thank you.
Thank you for working with the town, too. Appreciate that.
Best way forward.
You're not stealing my mic, I haven't.
No, he put it on the table.
So what else we want to cover tonight?
I mean, I know we got some minutes.
Yeah, minutes we can view, I mean, have you already read the minutes? I know that I had some edits that were taken care of.
Yep.
So, you know, I'll make a motion then that we can accept the minutes. I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from May 22nd, 2024.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have.
They reappointed.
Yep, you guys got reappointed. Joe, Courtney, and Michael.
We lost Courtney.
Courtney must be chasing the dogs.
Yeah, we have to stay with this.
No, Courtney, she had a long day.
Do we have any unanticipated business that may come before us tonight?
No. So based on what we did tonight, as far as closing hearings, what's up for deliberation?
We've got, well, 60 is removed. 68, we have deliberations over. 30, we also have deliberations over. And then you have the, the two building permits and the cease and desist for Thomas Mann.
So what are we doing, are we doing any of the deliberations tonight?
It's up to you guys, you, you want to put forth a reasonable effort over the next 20 minutes?
20 minutes?
Let's try one, and get out of here by 10.
Do you want to try Birch Road, that may be easier one?
I think Birch Road might be easier. Anybody have any other preferences? I mean, I have to remove myself from the Thomas Mann one, so.
We don't want to do 68 River Road other than.
You don't want to? Okay. Let's do 30 Birch Road. This is the detached garage in front of the house. It's going, they're here for a special permit, and they are asking for a special permit to, and construct a garage with a deck over it that is within the setback of the actual house. That's why they're here for a special permit.
I mean, the fact that this is a new house, and it was built under the setback requirements, and met those setback requirements, it kind of puts some, it brings in something that's not in character, I think, with the area.
I'd agree with you, Joe, I went out there myself, you know, hadn't been that familiar with that street. But, and it just, to me, looking up and down the street, it just would not fit within that character. It's not going to come with on the house that's existing, it's irrelevant. If there was another house, I think the garage, it was an older home, what it looked like with the house, the garage in front, it might have been attached even.
I think it was attached. I don't, I, I heard tonight it might even have been someone subterranean, if you know what I mean.
So I'm really not, to me, it didn't meet the character of the neighborhood. We had some neighbors talk about this at the last hearing. They have similar concerns, and they lived there every day.
The neighbors were concerned about the appearance.
And also this is. Nothing to do with value, that's irrelevant.
And this isn't about trying to. A lot of the houses don't, a lot of houses don't have garages.
Yeah, but you can't do it.
But that's one of their concerns.
The deck noise, and, you know, you.
And the, the thing that is kind of getting at me is that it was a newly constructed home that met the criteria for the setbacks and everything. Nobody's lived in it since it's been built, and now they want to encroach on the setbacks with a new garage, strictly for enhancing their dollar value on the home. And, and I, and, and that's not a, that's not a.
It's not a criteria.
That's not a criteria in, for us to make a decision. Our criteria is, is it in keeping with the neighborhood? Is it meeting the, the needs of the community and all that other stuff? And I would say, I don't believe it does. I don't think it's.
I was also going to say that there's not, I don't see a lot of, there are a lot of non-garage properties there.
Right.
And then, you know, this isn't about trying to have garages in front of all these properties.
Right. And I, and granted, it's a special permit, so it's, we, yes or no it, and that's pretty much it. And I would, at this point, my thought process is no.
So we have to make a motion on that, or do we, or we would for the write-up, because I think you know what we are saying?
We could prepare that, because I have a decision.
But I think we would be denying, we would be denying this.
Do you have to vote?
We do have to vote.
Okay.
I think we have to vote on the deliberation.
Are there any precedents for this that would cause him to go to an appeal process?
In re, my understanding is, we don't necessarily make precedences on variances, but on special permit, is there precedence? That can be. From this board? Yeah.
I mean, this is kind of a unique project, but if, I don't know, if you deny this one.
I'm not troubled by, it doesn't appeal.
Yeah, I'm not troubled by it.
I just, I just wanted, I'm just asking.
Two-thirds of the dwelling is in the setback. It's not one-third, it's two-thirds of the dwelling. And it's an accessory use building, it's not even part of the main.
It would have had trouble making a variance of the original.
I mean, up until lately, you wouldn't allow, you'd have a garage in front, yeah.
Correct.
David, you said it right, the original building was built to the requirements.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, it's within the.
It was within all the setbacks, it didn't need a, they didn't need a variance.
Correct. It's a very important piece.
Oh, now they, yeah.
Now they need a, they don't need a variance, they just need a special permit. But that special permit is now encroaching into the setbacks. And in my opinion, it's.
So are we still voting on it tonight?
Yeah, I would, and that way he can then.
Is it a simple saying we're voting to deny the special permit?
Yes.
Okay, so is that what you need to do tonight, to say we're voting on it? Okay, because, all right. So I'll make a motion to deny the special permit for a attached garage at 30 Birch Road.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we, can we have some discussion on the?
68?
No.
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 Which one?
Nine and 11.
You can have all the discussion you want. I, I can't be a part of it.
But we, but we can discuss it, we don't have to finish the deliberation, we start some discussion.
But have ideas, so we can think about it.
The only thing I got out of that whole discussion was, this was all construction compliance. It's nothing to do with the, yeah, enforcement.
I'm very, very.
Call up the court, tell the town they're making dust, you come out and check it, and then you put the water spray on it.
So I'm very regular to this.
You've hit it before.
I have SWPS, all right, I have many. I'm building a house in Dover. If it rains tonight, I'm going tomorrow to look at what's going on.
Yeah.
To look at the breaks in my wards, which is going to happen. It rained three inches in an hour. There's going to be, and you're going to write a report as to how you're fixing it. You're going to have documentation of the pictures of how it was broken, how it was fixed. I don't see this as being, what is the reason to pull a permit? This permit was issued a long time ago, right, with the whole subdivision. To pull that particular one is going to slow that whole process down. If, if they let it go forward and just put the third. If, if they let it go forward and just put the third foundation in, in nine months, they're done. On that side, you know? I just don't see how you, you can pull a permit that was issued by Bob without him being involved.
I would agree.
He needs to be involved. He has to write, he has to make a determination, okay? And those are all issues that are gonna give fines to, they're gonna, you know, they're gonna have a lot of written documentation and fines going back and forth. The border health needs to be involved, if there's dust, I mean, I, I dealt with it a lot. You know, the water trucks, where's the SIPs? Are the SIPs being done every week? Is somebody on site doing it? It's either a town planner or the town building inspector that's supposed to keep up on those and, and look at that documentation. If we're not doing that, is that really their problem?
Was that the case he was pushing, though, that he was trying to say that?
Well, he's trying to say that there was no.
No compliance?
No compliance.
And no follow-up.
There's no way he would've got through the, through the permitting process with Bob without being compliant. Absolutely. The man crosses his teeth. I mean, I know. There's no way that he got through without.
There was a lot of discussion in the beginning with the special permits, the comprehensive permits, about this, how close these were gonna be to these, these other houses, the buffer zone.
But that was.
Right, but that was kinda in within, I think the gentleman moved in after.
Yeah, he did.
Right, okay. And he does sound as though he'd be less, he'd be more comfortable if those houses weren't being built. I mean, that's clear.
That's not gonna happen.
Right, right.
Okay? And crushing the rock.
Right.
As far as taking the rock off-site, we have rules about that. You can't export material off-site, crush it and bring it back. All we're doing is creating a traffic jam. All this rock was to be crushed on-site, to be used on-site.
Yeah.
Do we wanna make a vote tonight?
In my opinion, it's very simple.
You're only member, I mean.
What was the wording here? Basically, you know, we're denying, it's an appeal, right? For.
I don't think you have to be too specific. I think if you wanna deny, you just deny the appeal.
Mike, he seemed to be criticizing what the town was, you know, tracking.
But he didn't do his, he didn't do his due diligence and like, where is.
Accepting the appeal or we are denying the.
Where's the, where's the backup that you spoke to Bob three times and that, he didn't do it. And I know that.
Right.
Of course he would.
Yeah, due to the requirements of the.
He would be down there in that day.
And then.
You're right.
I know, you're right.
We'd also be denying the request for a cease and desist.
And if it's a wet land.
And then in the decision.
Calm, calm.
Put a section, a small section for the cease and desist order. Then now the building permits, I mean, this decision will have to be pretty lengthy and detailed because of what he's raised and we have to address it, but.
Can we do, can we do it with one vote or do we vote, it's one appeal with multiple requests?
I would just do two votes because he's asking for two things and just make it, just to make it clear.
I think the cease and desist is pretty simple.
It's not in our purview.
You have no, none of us have.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll make a motion that we deny the cease and desist order.
But not being in our purview or?
Do I have to give a?
No, I second that motion. I second the motion. Oh, it's up to you to second. Can you make the motion as the vice chair?
Aye.
He can second. He can second as a vice chair.
He can't make the motion as the vice chair?
He can't make this motion.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion that we deny the assist, uh, the, what do you call it?
Cease and.
The cease and desist for 9 and 11 Thomas Mann Circle.
I second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, so that means that Bob can issue that permit tomorrow and they can move forward with that house.
We still have the other appeal going.
No, I'm just saying, cause it's two different parts, right?
Cease and desist was for the whole thing.
Was it for both or for the house that was the foundation only?
I think the cease and desist was both.
I thought it was for the comprehensive permit.
For everything.
What I heard him say.
Respect to the project.
Was, yeah, he says the project in the, his letter. And when followed up and asked him, he seemed to explain that he wanted to stop everything.
Rethink the project and reevaluate the whole project, which is.
So we just voted that.
That's out. Okay.
Now, the first request was the building permits.
You wanna look at the motion again?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion that we deny the appeal of the building permits for 9 and 11 Thomas Mann Circle due to the requirements of the comprehensive permit.
I second it.
Chris, they all in favor?
All those are favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that what you need? Yeah, stated four votes. Yep, okay.
You got it. Okay.
So all we got left is.
We have six minutes. Can we do 68?
Yeah, we can.
I think we can.
I think we can.
I think we can.
I don't.
I think the, the thing with 68 is that we're, we're dealing with a flood zone.
Good, so I have a lot of experience with flood zones.
Yes.
Cause I was a building official in Tiverton, Rhode Island. And you can build a house in a flood zone, I'm doing it.
Conservation's already approved.
Yeah, I'm built, I just built the house in Chatham and I had to build it three feet up and the water's gotta go through underneath it and it's gotta go back out.
So the question is, has he met the, the criteria for a.
Well, he meets all the setbacks, right?
Yeah, if he doesn't move it.
Right, the setbacks of the issue.
Well, no, cause that was the movement, right? If he moved it.
The issue is that he's in a flood zone.
The only issue is that he's in a flood zone.
Does he have enough frontage?
Yep, he has plenty of frontage.
He had the frontage and he's got the setback.
There's no dimensional issues, nothing. It's only, it's only a flood zone.
So he applied for a permit and was denied?
Yep, because it's a variance requirement because of the flood zone.
He says that in the book.
It says that in the bylaws.
Yeah, right. It used to be a special permit.
It has to come to us. It used to be a special permit.
He didn't apply for a building permit, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
No, he never, he never applied for a building permit.
He hasn't applied for a building permit.
He came to get the variance first.
Cause he knows he needs it.
Because he knows he needs it.
He knows he needs it, it's in the book.
But he's already gotten the sewage figured out, right?
Sewages, sewage has all been approved. Everything's approved.
Border House already approved the design, the septic. I happen to be a conservation.
There are conditions on the conservation.
Yeah, they've, they've approved it, so what they've presented is accurate.
I mean, I honestly, I don't see how you, I don't see how you deny it.
I think he's met the criteria.
Well, that's my question.
I think he's met the criteria when I look at shape, soil topography, I think he's met it.
Will you buy me on any of the butters on this one?
No, there, well, there are butters, but there's, there's no immediate housing, nobody that came here and nobody that wrote letters. 60, 60, which was, the which we, we removed from tonight, they're, they're like the closest to butter, I think, to them. And honestly, driving over there, I think it, 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 it looks like it could, it should have a house there. In reality, I think for in keeping of the, the community and everything else, I think it would be great to have a home in there.
Well, no one wanted it there when it was on the flight path of this airport.
Yeah, I, I mean.
I mean, I flew out of there, you only fly about 50 feet above that. Come on. I wouldn't want a house there. Not with me piloting.
Bobby Park had a house down there that he put eight feet up a few years ago on stilts.
There are a few.
I mean.
So there are other ones in that area like that?
But it's only a single story.
No, no, he's doing, he's doing a two-story.
He's doing like one and a half to me.
Exactly.
Says he met the criteria for a variance, that's all we have to look at.
I don't see why.
So as far as writing up a variance on this, saying we approve this.
The conditions.
The conditions, we have the conditions.
Cars and things?
Well, the conditions of the soil, what are we doing here on that?
Well, the findings, you mean.
Right, so I wanna make sure we understand the findings.
So there's the regular 48 section 10 variance stuff, but then this portion of the bylaw has three additional findings that good and sufficient cause, no result in additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, minimum action necessary to afford relief.
Which I don't think it is any.
I think it meets all those.
Yeah, I think it does make those, I agree.